Hello, everybody. We will call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the meeting in a moment of silence. Now, if the numbers will rise to say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, do we have any revisions to the agenda?
I'd like to ask that we move the strategic priorities before the budget. The reason being is, in my perspective, we were trying to have the work session before the budget, and it's a matter of cart before horse. If we don't have the strategic priorities, it's maybe beyond the point now, since we missed the work session. It didn't work out, but if we could, I think it would still be good to discuss one before the other.
And we can adjust for that, for sure. The reason it's in that order is because we thought it might be helpful to be a little bit more realistic about what the budget can handle going into strategic priorities, but either direction could be fine for us.
Since we've all actually looked at the slides, I think we're appropriately chasened.
Good.
All right, any objections to that? Okay, so we'll make that change. And next, we need to approve the minutes. We have the minutes from the March 12 regular meeting. Are there any changes to the March 12 minute meeting? Meeting minutes?
No.
Okay, so those will be accepted as presented, and we also have meeting minutes from April 16. That's today. The minutes print, and they sell you the date when you print, as well as the date
Yeah, we just have the March 12.
Which is extremely confusing every time.
Yeah, just the March 12 ones.
And so next, we'll have the spotlight from Claremont Elementary.
All right, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Allison Mansfield, EIP teacher and RTI coordinator, new to Claremont this year. In my previous years at Westchester, I was a tutor in the extended day tutoring program, and saw a lot of success with that. But when I got to Claremont, I was shocked to find out that there had been no extended day tutoring program last school year. Given the very large caseload of students that I have as the solo EIP teacher that I serve with reading and math interventions, and then seeing their ratings that Claremont received on the CCRBI in the fall, I knew that someone needed to step in and get a tutoring program going if we were going to close the achievement gap. Claremont was originally allotted two tutors for the extended day tutoring program with the ability to take on 14 students, but I felt like there was no way that I could choose just 14 with so many students that I serve, especially when there are many who are coming from DHA who do not have another means for getting extra academic help outside of school hours. So I pleaded for extra spots and was granted them, doubled the program to 28 students, and I'm going to show you a snapshot of what Bulldog Champion Academy, which was renamed to avoid the stigma of tutoring, what it looks like three afternoons a week. There should be sound.
Or lip reading.
They look happy.
Give us a minute.
Mr. Hart has helped me with getting better at word problems.
I get to learn and have fun by working with Miss Perkins.
And what do you do with Miss Perkins?
I read a lot.
Their confidence levels have boosted, and they truly enjoy reading. It's a different side of them that I'm unable to see while working in front of office.
Something that helped me with learning is doing math when I'm working with Mr. Upson.
Hi, I'm Amina. I like recess, and I like working with Mr. Upson.
Okay, read to me your sentence again.
Which one?
The one you're writing.
So, Mr. Moose said you can buy another bowl.
Okay, so, those things make sense, but...
I like touring because I like having fun.
You do not have to worry if you're a Bulldog Champion because it's just for fun, and if you get it wrong, it's just for fun again.
Hi, my name is Nadia, and I like to play chess, and I love to work with Ms. Perkins and Miss Perkins.
I love working with Ms. Mansfield because I like learning and reading words.
So, the favorite thing about tutoring is we have, we play at playground, and we play and we get snacks.
My name is Riley, and I like touring, and I like to do math and play...
I got better at reading.
I got better at reading, peace!
I like on Bulldog Champions, having friends and learning a lot of stuff.
Try reading again.
This can't go.
I like to read books on the computer. I love that I get to do stuff.
Check your orange piece right there. There you go.
I like reading with Miss Perkins.
I like Miss Perkins because we play games.
I worked with Mr. Upson on sounding out words.
I have seen direct improvements from the students from tutoring to our classroom every day since we started our tutoring sessions.
Hello, my name is Diana, and I really like to do fun exercises like the monkey exercise.
I think I got better at reading.
I got better at song.
I got better at reading.
I got better at reading with Miss Perkins.
I got better reading with Miss Perkins and Miss Mansfield.
I got better at math and subtracting using number bonds.
I, I am smart.
I love reading.
I like reading book.
I'm learning how to put three numbers together.
Again! What, you had, you had this going on? Count them all.
One, two, three.
And add your last one, one.
Yes, as a sub, I can see the techniques that are taught and learned during tutoring applied in the classroom, and it is a great reward to see the children excelling in reading and math.
The best thing about Bulldog Champion is math.
I love Bulldog Champion!
That was awesome.
So, we have a little recess and snack before we get started every day, and then we have an hour and a half of tutoring, but we always build in some movement breaks to keep everybody fresh. So, do you have any questions?
I do. Can you repeat how many days per week you do the tutoring?
It's Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
Okay. And you said you were able to accommodate 28 students. Is that enough, or do you feel like you need to or could do or want to do more?
It would probably, could help, I mean, it would probably be good to do more.
Mm-hmm.
The problem is that it was really hard to recruit enough tutors.
Mm-hmm.
So, because I was told I could have two, and then when I asked, okay, can we possibly have four, I wasn't able to find four people who would do it for $28 an hour, three days a week. So, I actually have had three certified teachers, three pairs, one sub, a nurse, and an administrative assistant on constant rotation, and I'm always changing the schedule to see who can, if somebody can't come, who can fill in for them. If it paid a little more, I think we could secure people to stay for, you know, to commit to the whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it would be great if we could get certified teachers.
Did, did I hear that one woman was a sub?
Yeah, one of the ladies that talked to us is a sub, also our school nurses here, and obviously was a tutor for us as well. And then the lady that was in the pink is our administrative assistant.
Okay.
So, it's kind of all hands on deck.
Well, thank you. It's obvious that you're doing a tremendous amount of good, and the kids seem to enjoy it, and it's really fun to see them light up and feel more confident about their learning. Thank you for going above and beyond.
That was awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
I would, sorry, one other. I mean, I'd love to have, I'd love to explore more options for how we can support getting you the resources that you need to, to be able to fully staff the program with, preferably what, I mean, if, if we could get certified teachers to do that, I think that probably makes a big difference, and I don't know if, I just, I just hate hearing that there's a need for it, and we don't have the resources to kind of do everything that needs to be done, and so when I hear something like that, I'd like to kind of dive in and explore that a little bit more, what it, what it costs and who's available, and how we could find the people, resources, and the financial resources to kind of get Claremont what it needs and other schools too, because I do think that there's a system-wide need.
I bet you could get some really bright high school kids who aren't certified, but they could fill her role, and I bet, I bet there's a number that would like to do that.
Community service hours as well.
Well, the ratio of one to seven would definitely not be doable, I don't think, by high school students, because it's pretty tough just for teachers.
Right, right, right.
Considering that these are 28 of our most struggling students.
Yeah.
Really, if the ratio was...
And it's the end of the day.
At the end of the day, right? If the ratio was one to four or one to five, then I think that...
I just happen to have a ninth grader who's been saying, Dad, I would like to tutor. How do I, how do I tutor somebody? And I bet she's not the only one.
That's a good idea.
Whatever she could do, you know?
That's a good idea.
That's great, thank you so much for taking the initiative to do that. Okay, next, on to, let's public comment now.
I think we just have one Sunday.
Beth Ann Clannan.
I'm really close to you guys. So I used to be so far back there. I just wanted to come really quick from Decatur Farm to school and let you guys know, you may have already seen eBlast across the school system, but we are having our spring dine-out on April 24th from 5:00 to 9:00. There's over 20-plus restaurants that are participating throughout Decatur, and so I'd like to personally invite you guys to participate in the dine-out. There's also signup genus out there that you can sign up and volunteer. We are in, we need volunteers this year because it happened to be that another event happens on the same night, and so that kind of took a lot of our volunteers kind of out of that pool, so if you have the ability to volunteer, we'd love to have you. I hear that a lot of the restaurants will feed and, you know, give you drinks, so feel free for that. Also, there will be raffle tickets that will be sold online this year because we won't have as many volunteers out, so please go online and see those raffle prizes, please purchase some raffle tickets. And then also, I wanted to let you know about the taste test that's happening in all those schools, May 2nd and 3rd. We still need volunteers at Renfro, so again, if you guys still have anything else going on and you want to volunteer for that, we'd love to have you. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
I don't have any comments tonight. We've got a big discussion coming up with budget and strategic priorities, so I'll hold any comments for next time.
I have a few comments for the chair's report. I'll try to make it quick. Let's see, first, we, we had a great tour of the Tally Street facility with Noel earlier in the week, I think it was Thursday, but very impressed at how that building is, is taking shape and, and, and just, you know, a huge thank you and compliment to Noel and, and the rest of your team for keeping that project on track, especially with all the challenges we've had due to weather, weather. But it's open to, scheduled to be completed by July 1, right? In phases, yes. In phases. It's looking great. In other news, we have congratulate, I don't know who to congratulate for this, Mr. Wiseman, but in any event, the, the City Schools of Decatur has gotten a grant from the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority to install an array of 59 solar panels at Renfro. I think this is really terrific, you know, that building is LEED certified, and so we're proud of that and very proud to have 59 solar panels on top.
Noel was instrumental in that as well.
Super, thank you. Let's see. In other news, the Decatur Robotics Team, which consists, what is it? It's mostly Decatur High School students, even though it's, it's all Decatur High School students. It's not an official team, but it is a Decatur team consisting of Decatur students. And, and as you can tell, Decatur, Garrett here is, is one of their mentors and really helps to make this happen, but they're going to Worlds. Is it in Houston?
It is.
And, and this weekend, right?
3,790 teams and compete across the world, and they're one of the, I think, 15 or so coming from Georgia.
Someone told me that their robot is, is ranked like the second best on the planet at, at doing things in reverse and picking them up backwards or something.
It's the fifth best climber in the world.
Okay, well, something like that. Very impressive and exciting, so, so congratulations. I wanted to mention the third annual Joe's Fund, Joe's Fund Benefit, which is going to be April 20. You know, I think that many of y'all are familiar with Joe's Fund, some of you may not be, but really, Joe's Fund is one of the original, sort of the original movers behind what became our Student Success Center, so this is a great organization, very concerned about looking after the mental health of our students. For information about the benefit, you can go to Decatur Education Foundation, squinch it all together, and then forward slash Joe's Benefit. I'd encourage you to attend. It's a fun party, you know, there's a silent auction and, and meal and whatnot, and the, and the money goes to a really important cause. In a similar vein, we, I wanted to, to ask everyone to be on the lookout and sign up to participate in the Chicago dinners. This is a diversity, equity-focused program that's put on by a variety of people. I can't actually speak too much about how this came together, but Claire Schneck Snyder can answer questions, and so can Dr. Hovellston, who are both involved in the creation of it, and, but basically, it's a sort of a roundtable, small discussion group-focused conversation about equity. This is very important and, and key to what we're trying to do at the city schools. This isn't a city school initiative, although we've been involved, but it's more of a citywide thing. And so, if you go to decater dinners dot com and then put in the passcode, the one in my email was Decatur100, that, I think it'll still work, and you can sign up so that you can participate in one of these dinners, or perhaps offer to host a discussion at your house, but, but I think it's important for the city to turn out for this because it's a, it's a good initiative. The Glenwood students have built something that y'all need to check out, there's a garden art project. They got a $5,000 grant from Zara Yi Hawthorne Arts Infusion Project. This is in association with DEF, and with that money, the Glenwood Elementary students created a sculptural garden entranceway featuring two arches and a flower centerpiece with organic features. I haven't seen it yet, do you have a picture there? No. And so, it, it looks like Mr. Jeff Mather, a local teaching artist, devoted a lot of his own time to, to this project, and so thank you for Mr. Mather. We need to congratulate the Dr. Martin Luther King and Coretta Scott King Award winners. The awards were given to two students in 3rd, 5th, 8th, and 12th grade at each school who most exemplify the character and beliefs of these great civil rights leaders. The 17 students that received the award were recently recognized at a ceremony, unfortunately, I don't have their names here, but presumably, we can find them on the, on the website, so congratulations to the winners. And finally, the public is invited to share personal obstacles with the Westchester 1st Grade students. The 1st Grade students have created an interactive chalkboard that shares obstacles that they have overcome. Their spring expedition is called Their Story, Our Story, My Story. After learning about the historical obstacles that many historical heroes had, they learned about, they learned about the obstacles that their teachers and heroes in the community had, and then they reflected about the obstacles that they have seen and unseen, or that, that they have, whether they see them or not, that might keep them from being their best. This is, sounds like a terrific project, so congratulations for that. The last thing that I was going to mention is that we had a, and I mentioned this at the, at the last meeting, we were preparing to go on a school board, to a conference by the National School Boards Association, and three of us, four of us, dead, right?
You were there.
Four of us, so I was there. But it was a, it was a, it was a very good and useful and productive, notwithstanding what I might have said at the last meeting. It was, it was a really good weekend where I think we learned a lot.
We did.
And I think that we're going to talk about some of the initiatives that might have come out of the weekend in terms of seminars and things to look at going forward, so I just wanted to say that I enjoyed being with, with y'all and look forward to the next one. Those are all my comments.
Awesome.
Thanks.
All right, next on the agenda, which I need to find.
Consent.
Ah, it's the consent agenda. We didn't ask anybody to take, okay, so the first item is the personnel report, the second, school nutrition report, third, the financial reports, fourth, an RFP for the Tally Street Elementary Audio-Visual System, the fifth, an RFP for the playground system, the sixth is the board response to policy 1.2B7 monitoring report, this is the monitoring report we discussed at the last meeting, and the seventh is the GSBA Summer Conference delegate appointment, having Tasha as our delegate and Garrett as the alternate. The, do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
Still moved.
All fair?
Second.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor, who's in favor?
I.
All right, so the consent items are all passed. I did the chair's report already.
Yeah, this one.
That's out of order. The informational report, so the, we have two. The first is the Tally Street Upper Elementary School update.
So, actually, Maggie is going to do the update today because Billy is having an initial meeting with Tally Street Elementary, what is it, stakeholders, SLT, something? New staff, so she's going to do her update on Tally Street today.
All right, so Billy sent me a presentation, I'm just going to go through this, and... There we go, got to turn it on. There we go, okay. So, he shared some information he'd like us to talk about. So, the SLT is met for their fourth time, they're an acting SLT, but they are in the process of reviewing the school's vision and mission statement and creating bylaws, so they are up and moving and just really rocking and rolling on all that stuff, so they've got really great stuff going for when that school begins, and we'll have the processes set up so that the SLT will be formalized once that school opens. Their steering committee for the Tally Street Parent Teacher Organization had their first meeting, they've had 19 parents representing, all of the feeder schools were in attendance, and since that time, the steering committee had sent out a Google request form to get volunteers to serve on the board, and they've been able to fill all their positions, so they're in a really good spot for, for a brand-new PTA, PTO forming. They also have lots of volunteers already signing up for PTO, so they're excited about that. Dr. Heaton, Mr. Heaton has been working on the graphic for Tally Street, so he, the mascot will be released soon, once he gets that formalized, but that's exciting news, and today, like Dr. Duddy shared, he is at a meet and greet with all of his new staff and faculty, so that's exciting. He organized a really nice meet and greet and had even the teacher he's hiring from Washington DC come down to join them, so that was awesome. They are working on bids for library books, getting multi-level texts, and the Playground Committee will meet again on the 18th to finalize the designs. Transition meetings are being scheduled for all K-2 schools, and in one of the things that Mr. Heaton and I talked about was in lieu of doing at the fave, they do kind of the rise-up day where the kids go and kind of tour the school, and since Tally is not going to be ready for them to do that, he's going to visit each of the schools, talk to those students, and then he is planning a really nice meet and greet in concert with the PTO for Tally to do a really nice extended-day tour, a nice picnic, to really welcome everyone in the fall to that new building. And then he shared some pictures, which you have now, I hear, have had your firsthand view, and it is, I have to say, a very impressive building, I was blown away and, of all the work and how great that building looked. So this is a view of the cafeteria. This is a picture, if you are standing in the construction trailer and looking out onto the school. This is in the media center and some, and also Building A, they are working on painting, and one of the features I like is if you see in the, this picture with the yellow wall, there are these hexagon shapes that are cutouts in the wall, and those are, I think, really neat focus wall for that, and that's in the media center. You'll notice lots of bright colors all around the building, and Mr. Heaton said the air conditioning is even on in that part of the building, so moving ahead full steam. These are the windows in the gym, they've been installed, and you can just kind of see how nice that is, really tall, big windows letting in a lot of natural light, and in that second picture where you see the green, that will look out over the playground, so that's a really nice area for the kids to play in. These are some of the cabinets that are being delivered, these will be installed inside the classrooms. Again, this is just another picture to show you some of the accent colors in the classrooms. A good picture of the outside scaffolding as they get up and doing all that brickwork on the building. Another picture of some of the highlight colors, and this one, the one room that's the dark blue, is there's some, several of the hallways have these little pullout rooms that they'll be able to use for small groups and individual one-on-one sessions, so that's a, a nice feature to have those really near where the teachers are. This is the main entrance of the building where people will enter in, and there's just, you've seen it, it's a beautiful foyer, it's a really beautiful space, and not that I can answer any other questions, but if you have any, I'll try to answer them or find the answer for you.
Thank you. Before we move to the next informational item, which is the Equity Spotlight, I failed to recognize that we... I failed to recognize that we have our city manager, Andrea Arnold, sitting in the audience. So thank you for being with us. I've meant to recognize you twice now, and I thought I'd better do it before I got really gone. All right, so next is the Equity Spotlight.
All right, Lily's going to come up and take that off.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to highlight some of our progress progress toward our district equity goals. It is our collective responsibility to understand and meet the needs of all of our students at this moment in time in order to build a foundation for them to be their best, achieve their dreams, and make the world a better place. This requires systemic change and individual change. As Dr. King so aptly put it, "All meaningful and lasting change begins on the inside." Growth in the area of cultural humility requires personal reflection and strengthening our skill and capacity through new learning and experiences. As you know, as a district, we are engaging in new learning related to cultural humility using the Courageous Conversation Framework. The theory of change is that courageous conversations lead to courageous actions which lead to systemic racial transformation. While we're using a multifaceted approach to address racial equity, our theory of change related to cultural humility is that beliefs drive behaviors which drive our outcomes. So this evening, we'll highlight the work of the Courageous Conversations About Race Affiliate Practitioners. Pacific Educational Group describes the role of affiliate practitioners as "an essential leadership position in which they engage in deep personal development around how they live and experience race in order to support others in developing proficiency using the protocol." Certified car practitioners will be able to support every facet of our organization and support our racial equity work through using the protocol. So we have been fortunate to have a second cohort of trainers go through this year through a generous grant funded through DEF. We've had the privilege of having these individuals work together to complete a 50-hour program, development program, with the goal of preparing them to support other staff members as they implement our racial equity work and address concerns at their school sites. As you may remember, one of the Equity Action Plan goals for 2018, 2019 was to have two staff members complete this process. And we've surpassed that goal by having 12 participants complete that process this year. So the 50-hour training takes place over a six-week period. It's an online course with 18 modules, two seminars with a coach and your cohort, one live in-person training day, and follow-up coaching, as well as access to a network, an international network of practitioners and online resources. We have had individuals from all across the district participate in this program. So you can see a list of some of our Cohort One and Cohort Two members there. And I've invited some of our CCAR affiliate practitioners to share a little bit with you tonight about their experiences.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity to share with you, but also for the funding to do this training. So last June, we did Beyond Diversity One. I know you guys all did that work. And so you know that that allowed me to spend time with race and how race and implicit bias show up. Through this affiliate practitioner training, it pushed me to evaluate my own race and how I show up as a white woman. We also looked at whiteness and how this shows up in our institutions and in our schools. I did this work, as you saw, with Wanda Nesbit, the gifted teacher at my school. And we are an amazing partnership, and we look forward to really doing wonderful things at Westchester. Another thing that I know Lily didn't touch on now that we've been doing is something called Leads Training. The Admin Council with the principal has been doing this leadership work with Courageous Conversation as well. And we had a training last week that just blew our minds. And it really challenged us to look at the history of institutional racism in our country. So now, the Westchester Equity Team and I are brainstorming ways that we're going to support our teachers as they go through Beyond Diversity One Training in the next few months. You know, because you've done it, that it brings up a lot of feelings, and we want to make sure that we're supporting them when these feelings and creating a space. So when these feelings show up, they have a place, a safe place, to come and talk so that we can move our school and our district forward in this work.
Good evening. Participating in the training through Courageous Conversations has given me a platform to address the concerns as they relate to race at the school level in particular. As an African American, it's often difficult to discuss race and mixed company. But Courageous Conversations has taught me to speak my truth and to share my own personal experiences as they relate to race. One of the big things that stick out to me through the training is experiencing discomfort. And I think that's something that we all will have to do at a point in time in order to be able to address these issues concerning race. Having recently completed practitioner training, I had the opportunity to complete a course that allowed me to think more deeply about the implicit biases that continue to impact the way that we lead, teach, and learn. As a building leader, the professional learning I'm receiving will be a valuable asset as we continue to continue our efforts to close the achievement gaps and narrow the margin of disproportionate discipline practices in the district. Also, I think that being able to do this, it lets us see inside how much we do need more professional learning on culturally proficient teaching and also understanding other races and cultures, particularly our minority students. It also causes me to take a serious look at hiring practices that will lead to a staff that mirrors the student body at Claremont in particular. And I'm particularly excited about getting the tools that I need in order, like Rochelle said, to assist our staff when they go through their Beyond Diversity training during the summer and fall semester and being able to debrief those conversations that they have in that training and further continue our equity work.
Janelle and I are here together because this course has involved a lot of deep reflection and a lot of practice of conversations, which we have done together and learning. It's been a tremendous amount of personal work and for me, has resulted in deeper knowledge of myself and the world racially. And this knowledge is already having a powerful influence on my work here at CSD. The understanding of myself, what I know, what I don't know, the deepening of relationships with colleagues has prepared me to engage and lead in healthy, productive conversations about race. I need to engage in these conversations and lead others to see the data, to examine social constructions of race, to hear each other's truth, to examine the presence of whiteness. I have to have these conversations in healthy ways with love and hope at all levels of our organization to support our equity goals. And I keep saying "I" because we have to keep it personal, local, and immediate. And it's really important that we have folks that have gone through this at at all the levels of our organization.
I don't have a prepared statement, but I have to say how grateful I've been to be able to go through the program. It just has helped me to evaluate my own views on race, to keep an open mind about multiple perspectives on race, to have the tools to engage in conversations about race. We all know how meaningful the conversations can be, but also how emotional those conversations can be. So I am grateful for the tools to be empowered to help keep the conversation going, to stay engaged, to experience discomfort, to know that we should empower each other to speak our truth, and also to come to understand that there will be no enclosure because this is a journey that we have to be prepared and committed to working on the behalf of educating ourselves, empowering ourselves, and most of all, wrapping our arms around our students who need to know that we are there for them regardless of our race.
Any questions?
No questions, but it's very powerful. Thank you for speaking to us about that.
Congratulations for overshooting shooting the mark on that. I'm glad to see that about half the principals have gone through the affiliate protocol program. And hoping that we'll get there for the rest of them. But I don't want to add more when you already overshot the mark. There I am adding more.
Not enough, not enough.
Is this the same program that we did? Or is this a more above?
There's another level.
We're not affiliate practitioners, right?
What it makes me wonder is we need to carve out time for ourselves as a board to make sure that we continue to do this work. Because if you're not continuing to do it, you're not using it.
Don't worry, we have plans for you. I just want to thank Tasha White, too, for having the idea of adding this Equity Spotlight into our informational reports. I really think that was a great idea of, because there is a lot going on that we're not shining a spotlight on, and we really should be. So thank you for pulling it together on short notice, Dr. Huddleston. And thank you for coming up with the idea. This is, we're hoping this will be a regular item of kind of, we were inspired by that Fave presentation at the, I think it was the meeting before, the one before that, just was a great way of showing what are we doing, right? What things are happening? And so we really appreciate that idea. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Okay, on to our action items. First action item is relates to the Board Policy Manual. Dr. Duddy, describe it.
Yeah, so we've got a version 1.3.3. And the I've attached a redline document that shows the language that's changing. But basically, we just needed a couple sentences added in to replace some former board policies. And then I recommend rescinding the six policies listed there. And I'm pleased to report, those are the final six policies that are from the old Board Policy Manual. So we've got that. And then I'll also just share real quickly. You may recall, we decided to do an interim legal review kind of of where we were at this point of the process. And I just got that back. It looks really good. There were just a couple of things that the attorney suggested we add in there. So you'll see a version 1.3.4 next time with a couple extra pieces in there. But for the most part, she said we are right on track. And the policy manual, along with the administrative regulations, looks like a really good match, and she was pleased with the work we'd done. So so far, so good.
Terrific.
Thank you.
So we need a motion then to approve the new board, the amended?
To approve 1.3.3 and rescind those six board policies.
Move to approve 1.3.3 and rescind those six policies.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just thank you and your staff once again for getting this over the goal line. Very much appreciate the effort that you've put into it. So all in favor?
Aye.
Chairwoman's eye, so the motion passes unanimously. Related to the policy manual, this isn't on the agenda, but.
Well, policy manuals.
Policy manuals on the agenda. I think that we, this really kind of relates to the monitoring report that we have. I guess it's one of our agenda items, right? Our next agenda item?
1.2.
It's the, yeah, it's in a couple. It's a discussion item.
Okay. So coming up later, we are going to have a discussion about the next monitoring report. And as I read the monitoring report, I continue to wonder that we need to rethink some of this policy governance stuff. Maybe I'll just save this for the monitoring report discussion. Let's discuss it at that time.
Okay.
All right, the next action item is the CSD, City of Decatur, Joint WAN Project.
All right, Esther?
Wide Area Network.
Ooh, good job.
Wide Area Network, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Duddy, good evening. And thank you again, Ms. Arnold, for for being here. Just want to highlight for you all an opportunity that's presented itself to partner with the city on a major undertaking that'll benefit us and our students and just walk you through some of the specifics. We have the opportunity to work with City of Decatur on laying down a brand-new fiber optic network. At its base, fiber optic network is a lot of really rapidly blinking lasers and really thin strands of glass that connect our physical buildings, bring all the data from our schools, from our other administrative sites, into our central office data walk-in closet and connect us out to the to the rest of the world, the internet. Currently, we lease a fiber optic network from an organization called Education Networks of America. They in turn lease the fiber from Comcast business. Likewise, the city is currently in the position of leasing its fiber network. And you can read a little bit about that in Decatur-ish this afternoon. So looking probably about a couple of years ago, the city was looking to lay down its own fiber optic network. And this is a map of 15 sites in the city of Decatur. And at some point, someone recognized, hey, we tend to be standing next to schools. It's hard not to be next to a school in Decatur. And so Ms. Arnold reached out to us and asked if we would be interested in partnering on this project. And sure enough, when you look up here, the blue dots and the yellow one are our school sites. We see a lot of proximity between city sites and and our school sites. And so we thought this would definitely be an undertaking worth worth investigating. This is not necessarily the exact route, but this is more or less the configuration we're looking at. This design puts all of the fiber optic cable underground, which presents a higher upfront cost, but provides tremendous resilience and lower maintenance and service costs in the long run. The ring configuration will afford us increased reliability so that if one branch going one direction goes down, we can still pass data back to home base in the other. Right now, we have a combination of above-ground and below-ground fiber cable, but I'd say that's less than ideal. And more fundamentally, this is a chance for us to to realize some savings over time. It is a significant upfront expenditure, but in the long run, this is a major capital project where we can either redirect savings or reduce our spending overall. I would like to redirect spending towards some of our student-facing projects, but you know, we'll get there if we have your blessing to proceed with this. The little bit more nitty-gritty, we would have 12 pairs of fiber. And our fiber would be physically segregated from the cities. A Decatur resident, I love my city government, but I don't want my city government to have access physically to our students' data. And so there'd be that physical segregation. And likewise, I don't want to know what's going on the police scanner. So the city's data would likewise be segregated from ours. And again, all below ground would would provide some long-term resilience. I grayed out the, you know, the the home icon here. And I don't want to steal any of the thunder from from Ms. Arnold at the upcoming city commission meeting. But one of the tremendous benefits of this network that I see coming to our Decatur residents, and especially our students, is this new fiber optic network will provide a much more versatile backbone for the public Wi-Fi. And so whether we partner with them or not, this is something I would say Decatur residents should get excited about, particularly for our students and for our families. So benefits, as I said, we'd be able to redirect some funds or bring in some savings. And you know, maybe this will be on your mind as we talk about the budget in a little while. It's also an opportunity for us to transition to an increasingly common model of doing WAN and network provisioning and education, going from a leased model where we have a lot of middlemen. We are beholden to these large entities. Comcast certainly brings some feelings, I think, for everyone. We've been, we have been served well so far. But I kind of like the notion of bringing that partnership more local and ownership of the network to Decatur taxpayers. Mr. Gilby, you asked a question before the meeting about whom would who would own the fiber. The city would retain ownership of the of the fiber. It's not our fiber to own, but it does bring ownership closer to home. So it's not through a middleman, through some corporate entity headquartered, not even down the road from us. This would provide some flexibility for us. Again, this is a 20-year-or-so network. We can get ahead of potential bottlenecks. I think we can reasonably anticipate our students only to bring and to have access to more and more devices, and likewise, our staff. So coming down to a few more numbers. Oh, one other, one other thing just to note. This model, this sort of shared municipal K-12 environment model is very common, particularly in small and like us, medium-sized districts. I think even Dr. Duddy can speak to his experiences in a prior life with this setup. Our responsibility for this is to be able to do this. in a prior life with this setup. Our responsibility for the project would be about $660,000. This money would come from splosts. So this is not at the expense of salaries or benefits or people. This is exactly what splosts was meant for, these big infrastructure services for students. And what I am asking for permission this evening is your approval for Dr. Duddy to enter into an MOU between the city of Decatur and the city schools, for us to iron out, one, our covenant that we will pay our share, and also to do these preemptive negotiations about other aspects of, of going into this endeavor, change management, maintenance over time, et cetera. So what happens next? Hopefully, you all will render a vote on whether to give Dr. Duddy the thumbs up. The city commission, I believe, May 6th, Ms. Arnold will bring our, the MOU that we've agreed to, to the city commission. We'll start digging, mostly sideways. And the anticipated completion date for this project is about June 2020. We don't anticipate, given a current contract, that we'd like to honor to transition fully our network traffic until 2021. That also gives us some breathing room in case there are delays in construction, which as Noel can tell you, never happens. And we'll go from there. So I've gone through this pretty quickly. I think most of what I've shared with you is in the board item that you've already had a chance to look at. This is an opportunity to partner with the city. And I do see benefit to our students and to the districts in moving forward with this. And I'm happy to take whatever questions you have.
I just want to add real quickly, I really appreciate Andrew Arnold having the foresight and the willingness to partner with us and for the city to do that. As Esther alluded to, we had a very similar arrangement in Iowa City. I've shared with some of you. It was a little bit more complex because it was several cities, several counties, and the University of Iowa. We all went together on one fiber-optic network, and it was tremendously successful. And it's just really nice when you can partner because a lot of the cost is in putting it in, right? Not the actual fibers themselves. And so when you can partner together and share some of that cost, it's really tremendous. So I really appreciate Esther's work on this, but I especially appreciate the city's willingness to work on this because they could have just gone and done this and not even come to us at all. So thank you very much for that, Andrew.
Do you have a couple follow-up questions? I appreciate the answer on owning. I just want to reiterate it because sometimes when you look at the contracts and you shell out large sums of money, the companies find ways so that when your contract is up, that you're no longer allowed to use the fiber that you think that you own. So it's very important that, that the city, the schools, really own it without any encumbered clauses. It's really easy. A lot of, a lot of organizations have gotten the short end of the stick on that. The next question is-
Can, can, can you, I'm sorry, but you said that we were not, the city's going to own it?
Yes, sir.
Are you saying it's important that the city really owns it?
The city really, really, really owns it. Because oftentimes, cities and governments will contract with companies to lay fiber and dark fiber and then find out 10 years later, when they choose not to renew, that they legally can't have access to their own fiber.
We would verify, and we will verify that. I've made a note.
Can I ask a question on that point? And this is going to show just how out of my realm I am on WANS or WANs or whatever you call it. So, but the city has a bundle and we have a bundle of fiber. So why don't we own ours and they own theirs?
It's a bundle within a bigger bundle. And so imagine there's the 100, would there be 12 of these bundles within a larger, I don't know if intubrance is a word, but it is now, within a larger conduit?
Like a tube?
Yeah, like tubes. A series of tubes.
That's an Esther word for tube.
And so there's, there's a large, there's a larger sort of physical mechanism that I think would complicate that notion of us fully owning our own.
It also makes it cleaner when you go in for maintenance and things like that, to have one owner of it. And then part of the MOU will be, how do we share the costs of that maintenance? And so it's just cleaner to have it much more delineated that way.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt your question.
No, that's okay. First, I should have started by saying this is a very smart project and it's very smart money. And it's exactly the type of thing that, that school districts and cities should be doing. And I'm glad that you have the foresight to do it. When you say that it's going to be underground, there have been a lot of experiments recently with how far underground. And I think somewhere in Kentucky, they found out how far was not far enough.
Google Fiber.
So I, I don't know what the standard depth is, but I hope that we're not in the exploratory experimental depths, but in the standard depths.
Yeah, I, I feel pretty confident that we're looking at an appropriate depth, in large part, and this is another area to thank the city. The city's engaged a couple of consultants who have long expertise in this particular domain. And the city is fully shouldering the cost of engaging them. So thanks again, Ms. Arnold. And we, one of the discussions we did have is what the target depth would be. And I don't recall, I can go look at what the responses were, but I feel pretty comfortable that we're not going to repeat the Louisville, Kentucky Google Fiber shenanigans.
Yes. And the final thing is more of a telegraphing forward to what might happen later. Love to, hopefully I'll be able to come to your meeting. Is E-Rate going to get in the way of the things that we could or could not do with this fiber if it comes into the schools partnering with the city to provide wider access?
So great question. My modeling of the financials has assumed a worst-case scenario of no E-Rate eligibility whatsoever. However, we've also been talking quite a bit with our fabulous E-Rate consultants on this project. It is possible that we might have some E-Rate eligibility for the construction costs, although I think that that's on the low end of probability. However, for ongoing maintenance costs, there seems to be no particular reason that we would not have eligibility for E-Rate costs. And E-Rate would not present a, a no-go barrier that would prevent us from doing the connections to carry our data.
Are you trying to say people are going to be irate about this?
No, I'm sorry.
No, this came up at the school board conference.
What is E-Rate? I don't know what that means.
E-Rate, E-Rate is a, is a, is a program. E-Rates is a program administered by the FCC through the Something United Services, something, something or other. I, technical term. It exists to provide discounts and supplements for school, public schools and libraries for their telecommunications system. So back in the day, it would provide money to help pay for your telephone systems, for your internet connection. Nowadays, it's largely toward connections inside of buildings, like servers and switches, or not servers, but switches and routers and whatnot, or the things like we're talking about. In fact, our current, our current WAN that you all voted on to approve about a year ago is partially funded or reimbursed to us through the federal E-Rate program.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You probably see a fee on most of your phone bills that actually ends up funding E-Rate.
Okay.
This, the E-Rate question, the heart of it, this came up at a school, the school board conference, is, I can't remember the correct legal term, but sometimes if we accept the E-Rate financing, then we become constrained by the terms of that agreement. And we might not be able to offer other free access to the same bandwidth. And so there's, there's also the question of if, and I know I'm getting far, far ahead of where we are today, but I'm just trying to telegraph these things now as potential concerns.
It's a 20-year project. Let's get far ahead.
If there are neighborhood associations or housing developments or students who we want to provide access to, if they're using our network or the city's network, are we legally allowed to provide them bandwidth? I believe there are cases under, currently where if we use E-Rate funding, that the answer is no. So-
I think it's a really complicated question, actually. And that's one of the reasons we consult with an E-Rate expert, because it is, it is a very precarious program. You have to be very careful with how you do for exactly some of the reasons you're bringing up. But in my experience with E-Rate, they're not necessarily looking at like those 20-year spans. They oftentimes will have a lifespan for something, and they'll say, in this time period, you can't do something else. But once you're onto that time period, it's yours free and clear. You can do what you need to, those kind of things. So we will bring this up with the consultant and make sure that we're comfortable with how that arrangement works.
Thank you.
If we're able to use E-Rate at all.
I just have one question about the anticipated reliability. You were talking about if hubs were down and that's why it's circular, so it could go either way. What's the anticipated reliability of this network and how does that compare to our current network?
High, both of them. And our current, our current WAN, except for a couple of strange initial outages related to other unrelated to city schools at Decatur work that Comcast was doing this summer, has been reliable.
Okay.
I look at this in terms of reliability over, you know, 20 years down the road. And so small percentage of failure rates, you know, propagate and present themselves as issues when you're looking that far afield. But our current WAN has been reliable, and I anticipate this would similarly be high reliability.
Okay. And similar speed of data or capacity or-
This has the, this has the potential to exceed that. Because one of the issues right now we have, because we have a middleman management and rely on sort of this, this current lease, is there is a cap on the data throughput that we have between sites. Right now, we have 1 gigabit per second between each of our schools coming into the central office. To be honest, we're not really hitting that right now. We've had, you know, maybe 50% of that. We have some spikes every now and then. But again, thinking about, over the course of 20 years or so, I don't remember what the exact sort of like theoretical speed limit of data is over fiber, but it's like way up here. And so if we realized, middle of the year or at some point, we really need to accelerate it, it becomes a matter of, well, let's buy the new box with the flashing lasers. And we can put it in a lot more rapidly than like a lease renegotiation with this middleman whom we adore, but is a source of potential delay.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm surprised that we only need one-tenth the bandwidth that the city needs. I would have thought that with all our schools and operations, we would need more.
It's, the, the rate of transmission is not a factor of the number of fiber bands. Right now, we, you've got one strand of fiber that carries data this way and one the other way. And that in and of itself is incredibly fast. The, the fiber networks that run under the sea that carry data between continents aren't all that thick. And a lot of that is just protection from the water and sharks. The additional strands have to do with the ability to segregate data further. So I'll actually use the city as an example. The city might want to deploy a series of smart streetlights, or they might want to segregate their, their police chatter. We could over-engineer it. The additional strands also provide a bit of a degree of redundancy. So in the oddball case that one particular fiber gets cut, we've got another that we can transition to.
You're laying a lot of dark fiber along with what you intend to light up, just for future?
Yeah. Better do it now than going after.
In any event, the, the cost, we're, we're basically paying the additional cost to give us our 12 strands.
Yes, sir.
That's what we're paying. Exactly. All right.
I have a question. What, what other, I mean, this is a large, it's a lot of money. And it's, so what else were we thinking of using the funds for? Like, were there any other competing needs for the funds or, or projects that we had in mind that are going to get shelved or set aside for this project?
So take a look at our upcoming expenditures, looking to dip into this piece of splosts. We do have other projects that we'd like to complete next year. You know, a lot of it catching up our equipment that is at the end or beyond its lifecycle. And I'm not seeing our anticipated expenditures this year in splosts to be untenable because we're undertaking this. And again, over the next, so our break, our break-even point on this, where what we would otherwise be spending leasing fiber versus this big upfront and then spending a lot less on maintenance, our break-even point is at about nine years or so. And beyond that point, then we're getting money back on our, on our investment.
Okay. And we don't have any kind of immediate, short-term projects that we're not going to be able, we wouldn't be able to get to because of those?
It fits within the overall splosts budget pretty nicely, actually.
Thank you.
In the long term, this is a money-saving-
Correct.
Yes, sir.
So it's spending money to save money.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Esther. Great job.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carried. On to discussion items. Legislative update. Courtney.
Welcome. I've shared with you, and you had a copy at your, your place, a sheet with all the education-related legislation that passed this session. There's also a copy attached to the agenda for members of the audience or in public to look at. So as you can see, a relatively small number of bills made it out of the session. We had about nine House bills, 10 Senate bills, and 12 resolutions. And the governor has until May 12th to sign or veto all these bills. In interest of time, I'm just going to walk through a couple of them that are, that are important, or the highest importance in this list. First is House Bill 83. This one is the, what's called the recess bill. So it requires recess or unstructured break time for grades K through five, and encourages that it be an average of 30 minutes per day. Our current standard is 20 minutes per day. Senate Bill 15, I've talked about this one before with y'all. This is the governor's safety legislation. It requires a periodic threat assessment to be done on buildings, facilities, and campuses by a person or agency approved by the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency. Makes private schools subject to the same requirements for safety plans as public schools, adds requirements to school safety plans to address security issues in school safety zones, at school functions, and while transporting students, and creates school safety coaches and requirements for them. It also creates the Georgia Information Analysis Sharing Center that works with the GBI. Most of the things that are in this bill are not new to the safety planning process. It's the coordination with, it's this new agency, the coordination with the GBI, and the coach that we will receive from the Georgia Emergency Management System. Next is Senate Bill 25. That's the one that revised the legislation that passed last session about bus, buses and the passing lanes. So this one's already been signed by the governor. It was signed in February. And this one will help on roads like Scott Boulevard, where they left that, you don't have a median, you could still pass. Next is Senate Bill 48. This is the dyslexia bill. This one went through several revisions through the session. It started out very heavy-handed, a lot of requirements. And by the time it passed through the House, and what's lain on the governor's desk now is, is what people say is a much better bill. So this one now requires the Department of Education to develop a referral and screening process, develop a dyslexia information handbook, and local boards of education to develop policies addressing the identification of and strategies to assist students with, students in K-3 with dyslexia and other learning disabilities. It creates a three-year pilot program for systems to screen all kindergarten students working with a DOE. And that's a very prescriptive program that systems can opt into. And it's a very small amount of systems that can opt into this because they want to, it's a pilot. They want to see how this works. Next is Senate Bill 53. Y'all are very well aware of that one, the DeKalb County bill. It limits, limits expansion of independent school attendance zones via annexation. Senate Bill 60, this one says school systems must provide sudden cardiac arrest training and eligibility to play athletics. Requires the Department of Education to develop, to develop and post materials to inform students participating in athletics about the warning signs of sudden cardiac arrest. And each school shall hold an informal meeting prior to the start of each season regarding the symptoms of sudden cardiac arrest. This is an important bill. Many people were really happy that this one went all the way through. And then the last one I want to talk about is Senate Bill 108. It requires computer science courses to be offered in middle and high school. This one also was very prescriptive at the beginning of the session, and then it took a much better approach to be phased in. So there's three years of adding these courses to, to schools.
I just emphasize, I am excited about that Senate Bill 15, the Keeping Georgia Schools Safe Act. In the past, we've had to do a lot of that effort of trying to do coordination. And like Noel, for instance, has contacts at various organizations, and a lot of the burden is put on us. And this helps formalize some of that a little bit more and, and helps encourage, we've had great partnerships, but this further encourages and gives incentive to those state agencies to partner and county agencies. So that's pretty exciting to have that actually as an act, so that we can kind of formalize that. And then the, the one she just talked about, the Senate Bill 108, about the computer science requirement, you know, that's something I've been pushing for a while and trying to get our district going in. And so it's also kind of nice to have some, some extra oomph behind that to try to get that moving forward a little bit more. So there's some, there's some good stuff coming out of the, out of the session this year.
What is SB 83?
SB 83.
Old and New Testament.
It basically allows, it's amending the election, elective courses that could be offered. It's nothing that you have to do.
It's not a mandate. It's just a-
Question on the recess policy, which would be increasing recess by 10 minutes a day for our K through five?
Yes.
Is, is that something that we have some flexibility with as a charter system?
Probably. We usually have flexibility with anything under Title 20, as long as it's not health, safety, and money, and accountability. But this one, there, it's an average of 30 minutes, it says, but it, and it also gives if you're, whether, if there's events at the school, or if you have PE. So there are, there is some flexibility within the bill already.
Okay.
But we definitely can look at it for a charter system.
And on the dyslexia bill, the part that you, you were sort of reading through the prescriptive elements of it, but you have to opt into that, or every school system has- Or every school system has to comply with the screening process?
The, the prescriptive part where you screen every kindergartner is the pilot program. And that's how the bill started for all school systems to do that. Now it's, school systems with um guidance we'll receive from the Department of Education must do screening for kindergarten, I think, students that are identified through the RTI process.
Okay. So every school, including us, has to screen kindergarteners for dyslexia?
Identified through the RTI process is my understanding right now, but not the full scale across the board screen every student.
Okay.
And I do think this is their attempt at kind of slowly entering into this. It wouldn't surprise me if we see bills like this introduced again to kind of broaden it out a little bit.
Okay.
Do you get money if you, if you uh do the pilot? Or do you pay for the?
Maybe, maybe not.
It's a good question. I, I would say the probability is about ninety percent. The answer is no.
Right.
Just based on other legislation.
It has to be put in the budget.
Most of it doesn't come with money, but we can try.
There's no line item in the budget for that, so, and unless they added it, usually it's an unfunded mandate.
Have you, have you looked through, or not you, or GSBA or somebody, is there a list of which of these are actually gonna require us to amend a policy or adopt a policy?
Um, I can look at that. There's, most of them will say in there directly that you must have policies for this, and that's one of those things, once the governor signs them all, we'll look at them and, and the Department of Education usually issues guidance as well.
That's what I was just gonna say. Once that, what is it, forty days the governor has to sign? Once that's over, then all, everyone kicks into gear and says, okay, what does this mean? Like, what got signed? What do we have to do about it? And so like Nelson Mullins will put out a, a communication about it. Um, GSBA often will put out a communication.
Harvard and Hartley will do it.
Harvard and Hartley. There's a lot of different groups that they're probably working on it right now, but they kind of wait till it actually gets signed, and they do it all at once.
Just to point out that given that we've gone a different direction with our policy manual, we're gonna have to be particularly village, vigilant.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And not to rely on the other ones because.
Correct.
And we have the crosswalks.
Yeah.
But even still.
Yep. No, that's one of the reasons we um wanted to get those updates from Nelson Mullins is because they're very helpful at catching things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Courtney. Very helpful.
Thanks for putting that together.
Okay, next on the agenda, I think we're doing the, the monitoring report panel.
Correct.
So.
Daryl. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So for the monitoring report, you, this is for reporting on the interpretation and sources of evidence for Board Policy one point two A, uh which reads, and I'll read it aloud so everyone can hear, "To the extent possible, given an equitable allocation of available resources, all students will graduate having attained their highest academic, intellectual, and personal potential, and will be prepared to thrive in life beyond high school." So scrolling up, please, you will see um that the DOE has helped us out in this quite a bit by defining what is meant by college and career readiness. And so it is defined as the level of achievement required in order for a student to enroll in two- or four-year colleges and universities and technical colleges without remediation, fully prepared for college-level work and courses. This means that students graduate having had rigorous content and the ability to apply that knowledge. So college and career readiness is about preparing students for college. And if students choose not to go to college, if they're prepared for college, then they're prepared for whatever else they may want to do. And so that's how the DOE is defining it. And so this would, uh, in our interpretation of ensuring that students can thrive in life beyond high school, we are applying the same definition as the uh DOE gives us for college and career readiness. Um, we are identifying, if you scroll up, please, a little more, we're identifying some sources from the CCRPI, the College and Career Ready Performance Index. So you'll see there are a few sources there. One is around percent of graduates completing a pathway, CTAE, or advanced academic pathway, or an IB-related pathway, or fine arts, or world language. Percent of students gradu-, percent of graduates completing a CTAE pathway and earning a national industry-recognized credential. Also, percent of graduates entering Technical College System of Georgia or University System of Georgia not requiring remediation, which is directly connected back to how the DOE is, is defining college and career readiness. Uh, there are other indicators in that, or scoring um ready on compass, or scoring at least a twenty-two out of thirty-six on the composite ACT, or scoring at least a fifteen-fifty out of twenty-four hundred on the combined SAT, or three or higher on two or more AP exams. Um, or four or higher on two or more IB exams. The last one is percent of graduates earning high school credits for accelerated enrollment via Excel Dual Hope Grant, Move On When Ready, Early College, Gateway to College, Advanced Placement Courses, or IB. So that was a lot of reading, but just so that we're all sort of have that shared understanding of how we're defining it. One of the things to note is that we would um not use the most current CCRPI because it was calculated differently, but what we would do to provide evidence for this in the data analysis for next month is we would use uh the three years that we could compare, the school years of twenty-fifteen, sixteen, sixteen-seventeen, and seventeen-eighteen. There is uh not a way to disaggregate biracial subgroups, the data that we have. Um, so we're not able to look at it in terms of equity through a racial equity lens because of that. And then the last part of the policy as written, so we've talked about the intellectual and academic potential currently. And the piece that, the third component of the policy is about potential. And so in thinking really deeply about this, we turned to the Cambridge Dictionary and wanted to see what is, what is a shared understanding of what potential is. And so possible but not yet achieved. And so as a district, we do not use nor are we aware of a way to measure personal potential. And in fact, we started thinking about how it is potentially introducing an equity by thinking about measuring potential. And so going against the intended purpose that we have around uh our equity work. And so that unintended consequence of measuring potential is that if there is some way, if there were some way to do that, and some quantitative measure uh gave us a number of a student's potential, and then we treated that student as that potential, but it wasn't the student's true potential, then we have um limited that student's possibilities perhaps. And so we recommend as an administration that we remove personal potential from Policy one point two A for that reason. And lastly, the piece in the policy, "To the extent possible, given an equitable allocation of resources." We understand that. To me, that there's a limited pool of funding for all the things that we are doing in the district, and that resources dedicated to achieving this end uh must be distributed equitably to resources dedicated to achieving other ends.
All right. Thanks, Daryl.
Thank you.
I don't know which way this discussion is gonna go, or who wants to start. I have, I have a number of things.
Go, why don't you start, and we'll just take turns.
Okay. So let me preface this for those in the audience, which is uh, that this is a um, th- th- this is a, a new process to us where what we've done through this new system of governance, where we, we, the boards, the, the basic framework is that the board's gonna identify broad goals and then uh empower the superintendent to achieve those goals with maximum flexibility. The superintendent and his staff who actually know how to do these things, we don't. We just have ideas. And so the idea is to keep us fi- focused on the big-picture goals and then to empower superintendent and staff to achieve them. The goals are intentionally very broadly stated uh so as not to take away too much discretion. One, in, a fact of having very broadly stated goals is that different people can look at them and come away with completely different ideas about what they mean. Another problem is that we might have a general idea of what we mean, but for us to be a responsible board, we have to find some way to keep the superintendent accountable for actually meeting these broad uh aspirational objectives, which means trying to reduce them to the extent possible into measurable, achievable objectives so that we can get these monitoring reports to tell us how we're doing. And so the monitoring reports then have two purposes. One is so that we can all come to agreement on what these broad objectives actually mean. And the second is then to assess how we're doing and whether some, either change in policy or implementation needs to occur. This is the second monitoring report that we've had, and, and, and uh, and really um, at this stage, what we're kind of doing is trying to figure out what it is that we mean when we wrote these broad words. And um, and then the, the sources of evidence are these, do, do these sources of evidence really get at that objective? That's where I think we need to have a lot of discussion because this is so new. And because of the way that the, the policy ends were, were developed in the first place, I think there's, we're probably not there. I bet if you asked five of us before we had a conversation together, what does this mean and how would you interpret it? Every one of us would come up with some common elements, but a lot of different elements. Which is to say that if we differ with your interpretation, it's not because you've done a- a- anything wrong or had a bad interpretation. It's because you're a sixth person and we're five people, and every person we add is gonna have a different interpretation of it. So we have to have this discussion.
That was a really good summary, by the way. I think we should like tape that and, and like write that down because that was an excellent overview of policy governance.
Well, thank you. But um, but so I think we had, need to have this discussion about what this goal means to us, and it might veer a little bit from, from what's presented. One thing that we've done after uh last month, where we kind of said, look, I think that we kind of interpreted those, those very vague words differently than you did, is that we said we'd separate it. We would have this discussion first before you go collect and put together, or put all the work into a, a full-on report. So this, the purpose of this discussion is do we agree on what the goal should be and how it should be measured? And I want to, I started to do this before, but um we need to circle back to, we approved the monitoring report and the consent agenda. But the monitoring report, remember, had uh statements that, well, there's some further clarification is needed, and so we need to circle back. We can't not close the loop by, by making the clarifications that we talked about were needed, but not proposed in the monitoring report. So that's another thing that we need to do. So with all that preface, my, my, when I read this uh first thing, you know, "To the extent policy, to, to the extent possible, given an equitable allocation of available resources, all students will graduate having attained their highest academic, intellectual, and personal potential, and will be prepared to thrive in life beyond high school." I think that's actually a pretty good statement of what we're trying to achieve. I don't think that it's captured in the, in the bullets. Again, just, and the, the things that actually are not just sort of pablum in the, in those words. I don't think they are. I think they have meaning. And I'll tell you what, what, what triggers in me when I think about them. One of them is that we're talking about all students. So all students will graduate having attained their highest potential. And that highest potential thing, even though it's hard to measure, is significant because it's saying that we are going to focus on every student, meeting every student where they are, so that every student's gonna get what they need to be their best person, right? And so it means that the gifted student is gonna get gifted material so that they are fully challenged. It means that the kid with special needs is gonna get special services so that they can overcome whatever those special needs may be. And it means that the kids in the middle of the spectrum, whatever spectrum you look at, we're gonna do our best to the extent possible and consistent with an equitable allocation of resources. That's why that's so important, is that we're gonna, we're gonna strive to do that there, too. One place where it would come into play real specifically, we've talked a lot about the dyslexia students and how do we know when kids need an intervention? And one of the things that we've said is that it's not enough that they don't meet the general criteria for intervention. If we can identify that there's potential that's not being met because IQ test doesn't match the reading score, just as a simple example. It's our policy that to the extent possible, we want to provide those extra services so that those kids can achieve their potential with our special interventions. I mean, that's one place where this kind of is intended to, to be a, the, the board's statement of, of preferences, at least in my opinion. It, it also enters into the equity discussion, which is that we're, we're gonna make sure that our resources are allocated and distributed such that every kid, whatever their race, whatever their socioeconomic background, gets what they need. And so we're gonna try, to the extent we can, uh to balance out those opportunities. So just in general terms, those are the things I think about, and you know, that leaves a giant question of how you measure them. But they're not, you know, I'm not seeing what I, what this, these words mean to me. I'm not seeing it in these pieces of evidence. My one last thought, no, I'll just shut up, is that um, on the prepare to, to thrive point, one way to get at that, it seems to me, and I have always been interested in measuring, so one of the issues here is that, okay, we've got so many kids meeting CTAE pathways, uh et cetera. But that's really a process goal, which is that we worked our process, whatever it is, and stamped the kid has, you know, certified them as having a degree. But we, that still doesn't know whether, whether that worked. We don't know whether they were actually with that degree in hand, ready to thrive in life. I would love to see us actually do surveys and interviews and find out. And you know, one way to measure this would be to look at graduates and, and, and find graduates from all walks of life, different paths. You know, find college graduates, find uh people who went to technical uh academies of one kind or another. Find people who went directly into the workforce and ask them, how do we serve you? You know, were you prepared? We could do the same thing by identifying a certain number of colleges that we send a lot of kids to, right? And, and asking them, how are our graduates? How do they compare to your other graduates? And do you see any deficits? I mean, that's just an idea of how we could, we could measure the thrive in life thing. And so that's, that's my thing.
Those are good points. I would point out that last thing you said, that's actually what um, we are a, actually able to do that now in terms of the seeing um what students need remedial work, um when they get to college, what students um are able to graduate in four years or five years and get a degree. Um, now that we have these universal state student IDs, um within the universities and the state system, we can track those kids and, and answer part of that question.
Are we doing that?
Yeah, it's part of the, that's part of the report. Um, I think it's actually in there, but. Yeah, percent of graduates entering technical college system or the university system of Georgia not requiring remediation or learning support courses or scoring program-ready, that whole thing, that we're able to track those kids now because when they first enroll within a Georgia school, um many of them as very young children or they move in, they're assigned a state student ID that allows us to track them in, and when they go into the university system, um within the state, we can still track them, which is really cool, and we can get reports, and that's what that works about still.
I think.
There's a little bit of that, which is, it's helpful. It's helpful.
It is great, and I think it'd be helpful. I, I, you know, in my dreams, I think it would be wonderful to actually prepare a survey, ideally one that you can figure out how to make some, you know, norm reference or something if someone's got that kind of a, a thing. But um, you know, to find out. And, you know, my own experience quizzing the kids when they come home from college is that um, you know, most of them have felt very well-prepared, um no matter where they've gone. And so I think we're doing a good job on this, but um it'd be nice to have some data instead of my friends' kids' anecdotes.
Right. No, that, we just, we certainly could do that. Um, part of what I am curious about is um, because I think you make a really good point. A lot of our ends are very aspirational, right? And one of the, one of the ends we'll have to monitor soon is our vision statement, right? If there is anything that's aspirational, it's your vision statement, right? Um, and I've been looking at other school districts' reports, and they, they do come up with very concrete things like these as indicators towards you getting towards your vision statement. But actually measuring something that's very aspirational can be very difficult. So I think we need to figure out, too, are we expecting all of our measures to be quantitative, for instance? Or are there qualitative pieces that we'd be comfortable with in measuring, especially some of these more aspirational things, right? What is our comfort level with like self-reported things, for instance, right? Like we could ask students, like, are you feeling challenged, right? Do you come to school every day feeling like an appropriate level of challenge? Not too easy, not too hard, just right, right? The Goldilocks or something, right? What's our comfort level with that kind of thing of having some self-reported data from, from students? Or we could have teachers kind, we could have them reading like, where is this student, right? Are they appro, being appropriately challenged? Are they responding to it? Are we adapting? You know, there's a lot of things like that that we're not doing, but we could. And I'm, I guess I'm kind of curious what the board's comfort level is with those kind of measures, maybe more anecdotal type things for some of the more aspirational items.
I think that's a good idea. One, can, one thing that this conversation is making me think about is the, the policy wording says that all students will graduate having attained their highest academic potent, and intellectual and personal potential. And then all the measures are things that you measure at graduation or around graduation time. But it makes me wonder if we ought to reword the policy a little bit, at least for me. I don't want you to just graduate having reached it. I want to, I want to, I want to give our students opportunities to reach their potential all throughout their career at City Schools of Decatur and not just to have made sure that we got it by the time they graduated. And so maybe it's a slightly different measure and it goes to your point a little bit, Dr. Duty, about some other ways that we can measure these things, which aren't just by kind of test scores and graduation rates. Because I don't think that those, those test scores don't figure out what a student's potential is. And I, I hear you, Daryl, on kind of the, the challenge for trying to figure out what does that mean for each child. But I do know, and this would be assuming that we didn't have any, you know, financial limitations on what we wanted to do. But if we were to go give every single child in our district a psych, an educational psychological examination and we were to get sort of a, a report on every child that shows what their IQ is and what their, you know, how they score on, you know, in math and, and reading and speed functioning and different things that, you know, spatial awareness, you could, you could kind of see from one of those reports what a child's potential is. I mean, you can see what their IQ is and where their strengths are and where their weaknesses are. And it would give you sort of the tool to be able to see, all right, this is a child that needs some challenge in, in math or, or she needs more challenging math, but needs some help in reading or something like. If you could get that snapshot on every single child, you could sort of figure out with some degree of certainty, not a perfect science, what their potential is. And so I would push back a little bit on saying we can't figure out what the, what a child's potential is. It's too, it's too subjective or it's, we can't kind of figure out kind of a measure for it. I think we can. I don't think we can actually do what I'm proposing for every student, but I think that there are ways that we could get close.
Another way to say it might be that you could pro, you could probably identify instances where potential's not being met. You're not gonna know someone's highest potential.
You, you may not, but you'll know what their strengths are and you'll know what their weaknesses are. And, and, and a lot of that is gonna be, I think, anecdotal and working with parents and other resources. They're like, yeah, this kid is really struggling academic, but gosh, did you see her on stage last night? You know, like, you could, you can see some of those things.
So I understand strengths and weaknesses to be different from potential. So, um, it's a bright red flag for me, the notion that as a teacher, having been one, that I would get some sort of evaluation for all the students and I would then teach to that evaluation. Because time and time again, in my experience as a teacher, students exceeded because I met them where they were and helped them grow beyond what they thought was even possible. And so I think a score is gonna tell us what we think is possible. And there are countless examples where teachers can talk about daily where students go beyond that. And so my fear, and it's beyond a fear, it's a reality to consider where teachers would start to treat students based on that and then there's a ceiling. I know that's not the spirit of what you're saying. I think in practice, that's what it would look like.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would sort of challenge you there to not, that, um, part of the, part of the reason for, for having this information is to try to determine what, what a child is capable of and what they need in order to try to, to reach what they're capable of. But obviously, we wouldn't stop there, you know? I mean, we would, we would continue to, to teach and to get the resources to develop the child and their capabilities along the way. And probably not articulating it very well. But I, I guess, and I don't wanna take up too much airtime on this. I would just say that what would help me, I think what at least this one board member intends with this, this policy or this goal, is that we will try to reach children's potential all along the way and not just at graduation. And so if the measures are all tests that we take at graduation time, it misses the spirit of what I was trying to do with this policy.
Before we move to Heather's comment, if we just struck from the policy, we'll graduate. If instead it's that all students will attain, would that fix it?
Well, I have, I think I have some comments on, on the, on the wording that might contribute to what you're trying to say. But I, I was very fascinated to think more about what you said about personal potential and the word potential and what is the definition of potential. So I spent some time looking it up. And I looked, I was using Webster's and not Cambridge, but I, I looked up potential. And then I looked up and I thought, well, what, what am I really meaning by potential? Is it capability? So I looked up capability. And it's the quality or state of being able, which led me to ability. And so I looked up ability. And it had several definitions, but the one that I thought was most closely related to what I was envisioning was natural aptitude or acquired proficiency. So I looked up aptitude and it came to capacity for learning. And then I started thinking about the policy wording and, and what are we really trying to say here? I think I agree with, with Annie and I think I agree with Louis in some of what they're saying. And I feel like what we're trying to say is, not that they've just attained it by the time they graduate, but that they're, having been challenged all along the way to achieve. So that's what I'm wanting to see, is that we're challenging our students all along the way to achieve their highest academic, intellectual and, and personal aptitude possibly. And where I was seeing that in a practical sense is some of what Louis was saying, seeing that advanced students who are accelerated have opportunities to excel beyond the norm. Making sure that we have students at Renfro who are motivated and excited and don't just finish their assignment halfway through class and then read a book. Like really making sure that when we have links, it's meaningful. Really making sure that when we have a student who has higher aptitude and capability and a capacity for learning, that we're able to challenge them and make them feel challenged all along the way. Same thing for if we have students who need remedial help and that we give them the necessary opportunities for growth and success to make sure that they're also feeling challenged. And finally, differentiation for all the students in the middle as well. And I think that if we could somehow drill down into what we are doing to meet these students where they are all along the way at all levels through differentiation and through these opportunities to grow and excel, that's what I feel like I'm trying to get out of this policy.
Can I share a couple of things you guys both made me think of? So Annie, it was interesting, your, your thought process as you're talking, because that's very much how the conversation went in my office when Daryl and I were talking about this. It could have been like a philosophy course, right? And we were like, okay, so let's just assume for a second you can measure potential. And forget about all the, the challenges of doing that. Just assume you can. There's a measure out there that can assume potential, that can measure potential. And you know that that's a valid and reliable measure. And so now you have this, this measure associated with each kid. And so if it truly is a valid, reliable measure, then when, once you've reached that potential, if you actually believed in that measure, you would then stop pouring more into that and you would put those resources somewhere else. And that's, I think, where our concern came from, which you kind of came back around to a little bit. And it, it gets, becomes this kind of self-feeding philosophical argument. And then you say, well, but it's not perfect. Well, so if it's not perfect, then how does it work and things like that? So it was interesting that you had very much kind of the same thought process that we were going through with that. And then I was gonna share with Heather, um, one of the things that you learn, and this is, I, I wanna summarize what I think I heard you say, because I, I think it's a good educational philosophy. And that is the, um, in, when you train to become a teacher, you take an educational psychology course. And one of the things they teach you there is the zone of proximal development, which is you wanna push kids a little bit past their comfort zone, but not so much that they shut down, right? And for every kid, for every subject, for everything that's slightly different, right? And you've all felt it before, right? You've felt it where some teacher is challenging you or you're working on something at work or something and it's just pushing you a little bit outside your comfort zone. But it's enough that you're able to get it and when you get it, you feel good about it and you're ready. That's learning, right? Like that's what we're pushing for. So that's what I was thinking of as you were talking. Is that kind of what you're talking about? Like for each kid, meeting where that, that development process hits?
Yes. And so in a, in a report like this, um, first of all, I think that the, the data that was suggested here is definitely interesting data, but it's at the end. And then maybe we can add a piece where we are in a more qualitative way describing the programs and the, and then, once we've described the programs and what we are doing to accomplish, providing the differentiated opportunities for the students of different levels, once we have that, I feel like we then might be able to, as a later step, quantify that and measure that. And are we improving? Are we, are we providing more opportunities? Are we providing better opportunities for these students? And I would be interested in student feedback. I think that we need to incorporate that as much as possible in everything we do because that's really the truest measure for knowing whether we're successful or if something that we're doing is working.
So you, you're comfortable with the idea of getting some, at least some self-reported of, um, you know, I as a student feel challenged, I feel like I'm learning something, that kind of information?
Yeah, sure.
Only because this is, is, one of the sessions I attended at NSBA was an outfit, and right now I can't remember the name of it, but I've got all the notes from the session. But it was associated, it's a nonprofit that, that branched off of the Gates Foundation. And the Gates Foundation has done a ton of research and work in this area. They're the ones who put out and produced a survey and it was actually the paper. It's a Harvard Education School survey that tested an instrument that was a student survey. And it was these questions, uh, do you feel that you are challenged every day? You know, that kind of thing. Basically, basically to, to measure the student's level of engagement. And what the study did is to study the responses to that question. And they said, how does this rate or compare to a quantitative value-based, you know, what do they call it? Value-add, value-added education where we're gonna take MAP scores and see how much individual teachers increase MAP scores. You know, a fraught, you know, problematic proposal, but there's a lot of interest in that. What the study showed is that this just general survey of student engagement was everybody's valid and correlated very, very well with the best of the quantitative value-added. It makes a lot of sense. And if students are happy and engaged when they come to class every day, you're probably doing a good job. That same outfit now has developed nationally-normed surveys that you can use to, to, to get feedback from your students. You can do the same thing. They have one instrument for the students, one for staff and another for the parent and stakeholder community. And that would be a means that we could, and, and they, they had many examples where, you know, with so many of these surveys, you get the answers back and you don't know what to think about it. You know, well, so seventy-five percent of our kids are happy. Is that a good thing or a bad thing? And then they'd say, you know, with these national norms, you can actually see that even though you thought you were good, if you compare yourself to the average, you're, you're not doing that well. And so you should aim higher. And, um, so I thought that that was, and it seemed as, it was about three thousand dollars per school on a annual basis to do this. And it seemed to me that it was well worth exploring and could provide, could be a tool that we could use for this.
Do you happen to remember what it's called or?
I can find it.
Got it. Okay, good.
Got everything.
Awesome. Cool.
I'm sorry for the interruption. I, I just.
So I'm seeing a lot of tests and metrics for being college-ready and even technical college-ready. Where, where would we see some of the metrics for those that go directly into the workforce? So, you know, some of those skills needed, like, you know, balancing a checkbook and making sure you pay bills on time and things that potentially a child at eighteen would go off to college. Another child at eighteen will go start working and potentially live by themselves. And so some of those metrics are different. And where would we be able to measure if we are preparing our students for those types of, for that particular path in life? Because I, I think what you said, but basically if you feel like a kid is college-ready and the kids are all college-ready, that if they choose not to go to college, then they'll just be ready because they're college-ready.
And that's based off the state definition.
Right, exactly, right. And I don't know if, if I agree with that a hundred percent. Because school is, is much like a bridge between, you know, the child and the adult. And, and school allows you to kind of bridge to becoming adults slowly. And you start getting these responsibilities and a little more time and things like that, where a child that doesn't go to college is jumping right into adulthood, essentially. And so is there a way for us to measure that, that we're being successful in that area? And that when our cha, our children graduate and they decide to go into the workforce, that they're not floundering? Because they don't know how to do some of the things that need, that need to be done if you're gonna go into the workforce directly. So I don't know if that's something we can just kind of explore a little bit, but I think that the message that co, you know, college has been such a huge message for all kids that sometimes when kids don't go, they feel like they failed. So we don't want that message to be the main message. Like if you don't go to college, you haven't succeeded. So just curious to see how we're able to measure that.
So what I would say, part of it is, is agreeing on what kind of career we're saying we're preparing them for, right? So for example, um, kids are not leaving our school system prepared to become auto mechanics.
Right.
Could be a great career. We're probably gonna have cars for a pretty long time, right? Like, um, and that's just not something that we're doing. It's not a focus. We don't have a program, et cetera. But we hopefully are preparing, so if a kid does want to go down that path, they've, they have the preparation they need to go to like a technical college where they can get the skills to become a HVAC repairman, a, a electrician, a auto mechanic, a whatever, right? So there are, I would say typically, our district is very college-focused, right? But I think the point of the definition the state has put together is that hopefully if you have those skills to be ready to go to college, you can then specialize however you want to specialize. So, um, I don't think, we have talked very much as a district about what about a kid who doesn't wanna do all that, right? What about a kid who truly is just gonna go to work when they graduate from high school? And that's something I think we'd have to have a lot more conversation about of what that looks like. So that if it is things like having those independent living skills so that we know that kid's ready to balance their checkbook and do their taxes and handle their money and, you know, not have to move back in with mom and dad and things like that. Like those are things, if we could agree on what those look like and then agree on, is that something we expect from every student or only students who are choosing that path? I think if we could agree on that, we definitely could come up with measures then of saying, let's see evidence that we're actually doing this for these children. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
I just think there's a lot of different paths. And if we don't agree on what those are, um, there are definitely career paths that don't, that we just don't offer, right?
Right.
So those are some of my thoughts about that.
Makes sense. Okay.
I've been scribbling down a lot of notes. I don't wanna cut you off.
I'm good.
You're good? I wanna start, Daryl, by saying this is a typical problem for software developers. Somebody writes a spec, they ask you to do some work and then you start talking about your work and they change the spec. And so we're doing that right now. We're changing the spec and I'm apologizing for that. It's inevitable. And I think policy governance makes it worse, worse because intentionally you start general and then through this iterative process and the back and forth, we're gonna, you know, get more precise, but it will be slow and painful and drawn out. we're gonna, you know, get more precise, but it will be slow and painful and drawn out.
Especially in the beginning.
Right. I, then want to say, before I pick at the CCRPI, I want to acknowledge that it's probably the right place to start. I'm actually very happy you're not using some composite score from the CCRPI, because they change it all the time. It might stay still for a year or two, but three years is always too long and then they change it. So if we never use the composite score, that would be fine with me. I, I do think that, that picking and choosing from it the way you've done, particular sources, is a good way to start. I'm gonna circle back at some point to the things that everyone else has talked about, about, you know, is it really hitting the mark? But you gotta start somewhere. So, let's see. If we wanted to, let's, potential versus tracking. What I heard when you said was potential equals tracking, in a certain sense. And I heard that if you administer a test, aptitude test, you're gonna have a tendency to box that child in, track them. What we think of as aspirational, capable, achieving goal eventually becomes the finish line or the gate. And so, in hearing what the rest of you all have, have said, how can we change those words? You know, I, I think, you know, in the survey, I'm jumping around. In the survey thing, they talked about how engagement means a different thing to parents and students than it does to, to teachers. For teachers, it tends to be on task, actively on task. And for students, it tends to be, I'm passionate about what I'm doing. The student can be passionate about doing something that's not on task. They're entirely engaged, but completely disruptive to the classroom. So I'm gonna try to circle back to the language again. Gateways, the, the personal part to me is important, because there's the, there's that zone of prox, proximal learning, right? And that's, can we get you to the next level? And that's kind of directed. We're directing you towards the next level here. And I think the aspirational goal that we've got here is it's the student's potential, the student's achievement, the student's goal, their finish line. And I, I'm afraid that if we, if we cut too hard and we take out the personal potential, then we're left with academic, intellectual. And that's a box that isn't going to be engaging to all of our students. Or we may be able to get them to reach the academic and intellectual finish lines, but not have achieved their potential. So I, I think what I'm trying to do is work on words like opportunities to achieve, that we will, I'm trying to find words that allow us to... I kind of like what you said, Louis, about cutting out the will graduate and saying attain. Will demonstrate through, I have to come back to that. But I think we do need to work on that language. And I, I'm worried about losing the whole child aspect and becoming too narrowly confined on the things that we can find in the CCRPI.
Can I chime in on that Garrett point for just a second? I think, I, I feel like as this conversation goes on, I feel like potential is the right word, but this should not be the end goal. Like, there should be another step to this goal. So we're gonna, we want to get our students to reach their potential in these areas. And then, policy one point to A, B is, and then once they reach their potential, we want to continue pushing them to find out what they're capable of beyond their potential. So I don't know that the language, at least for me, I don't, I want to take out the graduation part of it to address the, you know, all along the way aspect of this. But I think maybe this just needs, just needs another provision to it, a second piece of it, so that it's clear that once they reach their potential, our work is not done. We're gonna continue to push them. I don't know, sorry, go ahead.
No, it's, with, with what you're saying, one of the, the difficulties with the policy governance is that we're supposed to be defining ends that are kind of results-oriented. And we all know that it's about the daily journey. It's not about, you know, the graduation finish line. And so I'm struggling with that, too. You know, how do we make something that's aspir, formative? But we, we can't do formative, that's the how. That's, that's the, the, in the kitchen. And so I'm, I'm struggling. One of the things I thought about, and I'll cross this one off here, is instead of the CCRPI, if you wanted to pick something that was nationally or internationally-normed, that wasn't a graduation exam, I would say, let's explore PISA for schools. You know, PISA is, there's a lot of data. There's huge volumes that you can extract from it, and it's international. It's everywhere. So if you want to see how our kids are doing when they're fifteen at one point, that might be a good point. It's not the graduation line. I think I've covered most of the things. I'm gonna quickly just go down the points that you had and respond to each of them. On the first bullet, I don't know if you can bring it to the first bullet. Okay. I like the idea of using something that's kind of intentionally an elective pathway. Something that, to me, that gets to the point of the student's choice, of demonstrating, reaching a potential CTAE, IB, career or otherwise. I worry about world language unless I can demonstrate a fluency in it. Simply taking four years of language doesn't mean that you've achieved a language. So this is part of the, the question I have, and you hinted at this at the beginning with, we can't disaggregate the intersectionality of this and race. How deeply can we cut into any of the things that the CCRPI provides? Or how easily can we get at it because we're providing it to them in the first place? So if we could cut out the language part there, I think we've got, the stamp test is in our budget conversation. You know, being able to assess fluency is something we've got covered in a different goal, so. I also worry about, I would want to see how many students are doing each one of these. We might actually, you know, over time, develop different weights towards these, or it might give us another lens or perspective on how well we're meeting that goal. Next bullet point, nationally-recognized CTAE credentials. My question is, what qualifies or constitutes a nationally-recognized one? Is it something like a comp TIA certificate, an industry standard thing, that somebody who wants a job puts down and the employer says, yeah, I need somebody with A-plus certification? Is it that, or is it something else? Sorry, this is the second bullet point.
Gotcha, yes, I just wrote that question now.
Okay. The next one, I like the percent of students not needing remediation in higher studies. That's a good one, because it tells us how adequately we prepare them for college. Another one, which is often available, and I don't know if it is, is how many students finish their first year and continue to the second? That's just a slightly fuzzier, but also a, did we really prepare them for year one? If they come back for year two, I think that we can say that we've done our job, because at that point and on, it's kind of on them for how well they succeed or not in college. I don't think that we can assess the performance of the school on whether or not they actually get their college degree. But if we get them there without needing remediation, and they have a successful first year and continue to the second, I think those are great measures. The fourth bullet point, I just wanted to pick at, because I pick it then, the high school credit part. College credit, I'm good with. If somebody takes a college class but doesn't get college credit for it, I don't know that that's a measure of success. So I would want to change that one to percentage of students earning college credit through any of the above.
Just so you know, I just looked at that one. I think the college credit one actually was in the bullet before, because it's about the students scoring three or higher on two or more AP exams or four or higher on two or more IB exams. So I think they kind of separated it down as two parts. I get, totally get what you're saying. But I think the purpose of that last part of the bullet before is the idea being, most colleges, if you get those scores, you get college credit. So that part is covered, but then I hear what you're saying about, but just having high school credit at the other one isn't sufficient. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And maybe the dual enrollment could be added to the, to the one before. And I do acknowledge that whether or not a student gets a three or higher on an AP exam or a four or higher on an IB exam, the, the research says that if you expose students to those higher-level classes, that they are prepared better for what follows in college and career. So I, I do see a value in, in tracking whether or not students have been exposed to and allowed to take AP, IB, and similar. I'm just not, I, perhaps that's a good way to capture it. I'll have to think, reflect on that. And I've already covered the reflecting on the personal potential. And the last thing was Tasha's comments. Perhaps one of those things, the thing about bridging between high school and what follows, this doesn't exactly hit on the career pathway and how we can measure preparing students for career. But I wonder how many of our students who are accepted to a university, a technical school, or an associate's degree program are unable to find the financing or navigate the FAFSA and all those other things that they have to do in order to actually get to the front door? And so for me, it would be interesting, is maybe a first step, is simply to know how many of our graduates who were accepted are able to go. And, and perhaps one of the ways of filling that is, what type of financial planning assistance? Or how do we? I, I don't want to get into the how, because we're gonna measure the result. But how we prepare them for that is gonna be reflected in that result. Sorry for being so long-winded.
Thanks. Can I suggest, I think you gave a lot of great feedback. What I may recommend is that we take what we heard, and we could do two things. One, maybe recommend some changes to the policy language. Maybe we could start a draft, or maybe Louis and I could work on a draft or something like that. And then bring a new interpretation based on those changes to the next meeting. And let's try to get it right before we get to the point of then saying, let's start writing the report. I mean, I'd be perfectly comfortable with that if you guys are comfortable with that.
I think we should go ahead with the report.
Should we?
Yeah. I, I think it's a good time to take the time. I don't feel like we need to artificially rush here, so.
And, and so maybe we should table the conversation. I wanted to say, there's one, well, there's two points. One is that what you said, Garrett, about personal potential, I had written down to say the same thing. So it resonated with me, which is that I think the work that that phrase does in this policy really is about the whole child. And it's about not just, and, and I, I think, personal in, in terms of character development. And there is a separate policy that addresses character development. But I still think it's, it's part of that. But I also think that it's academic, intellectual, and personal. And at least for me, I was thinking that we want to be there for the kid who's STEM-oriented. We want to be there for the kid who's interested in English and language. But we also want to be there for the kids who are interested in music or in sports or wherever their, their special talent is. And so that, that was kind of, not that anybody else would see it, but in my own brain, when I see that, that's one of the things that I think of, that I think is important, that I don't think we should lose.
Okay.
The other point that I wanted to mention before we, is you asked a question about our comfort level with qualitative versus quantitative measures. One of the things that the folks who, you know, write books about how to do this policy governance, they really do say that you need to try to think and be aspirational. And even though it is important to do the work to try to reduce it to measurable goals, it's also important to be aspirational. And so when you're doing your ends policies, the general wisdom that I've seen is, say what you think and then worry about how to translate it into ends later. So the fact that it's difficult is not a reason necessarily to change the language.
Right.
It might need clarification, it might not. My opinion, personal potential kind of is what we're talking about and is the appropriate word. And, but I'm also gonna be more tolerant of qualitative versus quantitative measures with the idea that we're gonna figure out the quantitative stuff down the road.
I think we'll be, I think we're much more comfortable probably with qualitative things, too, if it comes from like that group you were talking about, who's done the research and has done some norming and things like that, as opposed to some homegrown qualitative piece, right? I think, I know I feel more confident of things like that, so.
I think I attended the same session, and one other thing they did is they actually have them exile-normed as well. I don't know if that's the right phrasing. So that the third graders get questions that third graders are actually understanding.
Oh, cool.
Under, when they answer.
Nice.
Okay, so, so we're gonna table this now, right?
Yeah, we'll plan to, plan to bring back a, a updated interpretation and evidence. And as we review of the discussion tonight, if there's things we see that maybe we would recommend tweaking in the language of the policy itself, we'll send that around just to get your input on that, to see.
Is it, is it okay for us to broadcast that we realize that we may need to develop the data qualitative and quantitative over a number of years? I think it's okay to start with what we've got, just not to be boxed in by it.
Yes, right.
This is a good start. I hope that this feedback is, is taken in the spirit that it's intended, which is, this is a conversation and evolving and iterative. And this was a good, a good first start at kind of trying to interpret what our, our policy goal is.
Like Louis said, with his, with his preamble.
Yeah.
I, I think that really helps set the stage, because that is what, exactly what needs to happen. And this is gonna happen again and again and again. Darrell and I have already started looking at the character one. And believe me, we're gonna have this same conversation again, right? Like, it's gonna continue happening, especially when we're talking about monitoring ends policies.
Yeah.
The much easier one to monitor are the executive limitations, right? Either you're doing it or you're not. Whereas the end policies are very aspirational.
Yeah.
The only other thing I'll say is that I think it's actually good that we use our board time, even though it might sound like a ridiculous circular discussion. It's better than talking about the size of the median.
This is what we should be calling, talking about, exactly.
And I appreciate how difficult it is to come with just the preliminary suggestion of what you are guessing this means, because it's very broad. But thank you, because that's what helps spur the conversation and give us something to react to. So thank you for that.
Thank you for your feedback. I really did appreciate the conversation.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Darrell.
Before we leave this item, though, do we want to do anything with the report that was approved on the consent agenda that has some action items? Or do we want to add that as a item for next time, or how do you want to handle that?
Well, my head's not in it, because I, so let's table it.
Let's add it for another.
Well, just add it as an actual agenda item next time to make whatever policy recommendations based off that monitoring report.
Yeah, there were suggestions in the report of the directions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darrell.
All right, why don't we take a five-minute break? And then we'll come back and get the cheering news on the budget.
Woo!
Aren't we gonna do the?
Oh, no.
Strategic priorities.
Strategic priorities. Yes, and then budget.
Sorry. Sorry.
I'm not in a hurry to get out of here. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, we're this week and trying to be done at a reasonable time. And I feel like the budget plus strategic priorities plus everything else in executive session is ambitious for the rest of the night. That's what I was gonna say. We're gonna split that short. We were gonna do a whole work session on it, and now it's getting late. I feel like it's gonna get rushed.
I agree. We're gonna do it at the side of the table now. So that means we go forward, we have to listen to the budget.
Yeah, I think we should do that. I think we should do the budget. I just don't think the other, you guys were talking about the sequence anymore.
We want to talk to you. But, but I think that it's.
But we're gonna have several conversations about the budget.
And if you look at the slides, you're already aware of it. And if you look at the slides, you're already aware of it.
Last year, the current year was the sixty-four million dollar budget. And this one was the seventy-two handle. And this one. Is that not?
This is revenue. You're looking at its managers.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is that what you said?
Yes.
I know, and believe me, I have to this presentation.
I don't know if you saw one of my notes, which was. Budget revenue is thirty-three million this.
Yes.
Side nine, it's that.
Yes.
Side nine, the footnote, something else.
Did you see my explanation?
No.
It's because, um, it's because of the mill rate adjustment. So this is what we actually are projecting this evening, okay?
For this year.
Yes. This is what we've budgeted. And then if you adjust this. This one especially is complicated, because with the mill rate adjustment, if you take this and you divide it by eighteen point six-six, and multiply it by twenty point six, you get that.
Yeah, I, I got, I did read that.
Yeah, okay.
And I somehow, my blinders were on, and I didn't see the mill rate adjustment at all.
I understand.
Yes, not. It's just for everybody. Random.
When somebody hits their car.
Why?
Call the police, call the insurance.
Yeah.
No warning, you followed the person.
Don't do that. Don't ever do that. Yeah.
Chatting.
Right. I just need to know.
We'll start the same thing.
Right.
Okay. So call the meeting, call the meeting back to order. Um, but I think in order to uh respect everybody's time, we have a proposal.
Okay.
To, to modify the agenda, to strike the discussion of strategic priorities, and kick it to a work session that we plan now in the next couple of weeks. So that we can get a preview of the budget, and then have an actual work session on strategic priorities, which will then precede the next work session, which will be on the budget. We'll have two work sessions this month.
Yeah, so coming up, we've already determined we want our work session for um whatever month we're in, April, um to be budget. So um the idea being, find another date between now and then for the full strategic plan conversation, strategic priorities. Um, and then we also bring the budget back again at the next meeting, the regular meeting. So we would, we would have a introductory budget conversation now, and then those other two. And then that way, we could be a little more focused on the strat priorities discussion. You guys are up for that.
So the thirtieth is when our, is it the thirtieth that our, is when the budget meeting is?
Um, let me find it. Yes, April thirtieth.
So it would have to be then, the twenty-third, if we wanted to keep it Tuesday, Tuesday?
If we kept it Tuesday, we do have the system charter leadership team Tuesday night, but we could reach out to them to see if they could reschedule. We've had to.
The twenty-second works for me.
Twenty-second?
Yeah. It's Easter Monday. Don't even know what that means.
I don't either, but it's on my calendar. Google, Google wanted me to know, it's Easter Monday.
Uh, I'm good on Monday, the twenty-second, Garrett?
Um, I'll have to check. I don't have my electronic device with me.
I think I can make it work.
You left the house without your electronic device?
I think so. Yeah.
Should we tentatively plan on it, and we'll, and Garrett.
Sitter, but that should be fine.
Yeah, let's, let's tentatively, so I don't put any.
So tentatively, we'll do a work session. What is this date? Did this, so it's next week?
It's next Monday.
That's next Monday. So tentatively, we'll, the discussion about strategic priorities will be a work session next Monday.
Yes.
It's at seven-thirty start time.
Well.
Typically, that's what we do.
Can.
Is that okay?
For work sessions. I think it's fine, if it's that one topic.
Okay.
Uh, is it possible, I just wonder if we want to start it early, earlier, if it's difficult for people coming from, from, straight from work. But I'm thinking about the people who are staying after work for that. It's a kind of a long gap, maybe, if, if it's possible to move it sooner.
I think it's so late because uh of my preference, but I don't mind moving it earlier.
We go at six-thirty, or earlier?
That's fine.
I'm good with that. Six-thirty, maybe?
So, so Monday, the twenty-second.
Monday, the twenty-second, six-thirty, work session here for um strategic priorities discussion.
Would you say your house pizza, beer?
Yeah, exactly. I think that's what I said. Okay.
And just to confirm the time, on April thirtieth, that one I have from seven to nine, are we keeping that time at seven, or are we moving that one forward?
Like what you said, I'd be all for moving it to six-thirty, um because we do typically, the folks you see here stay. So if it works for you, that'd be great, but we can be flexible too.
Um, I have a, I'm going to be cutting it close on that one. I have a flight that lands around five-thirty.
Okay, so we can keep that one at seven.
So leave that one at seven?
Sure.
That's fine with us.
Okay.
Okay. We'll get that on the calendar, and Garrett, if you can just maybe let me know, once you can check and see, that'd be great. April twenty-second, which is next Monday, at six-thirty PM.
And the other one was?
April thirtieth.
The one that's already scheduled is April thirtieth at seven PM. Yep.
Okay, so the, we ready?
Yep.
The next item on the agenda is the discussion of the budget draft number one.
So while Susan's coming up, I'll just give you a quick uh overview, just to um make sure, in case you didn't see my note um earlier in answer to Garrett's question. Um, we tried to, to really reflect on the feedback we got from the board last year um in that work session about the, how conservative we were planning, and things like that. And it was really helpful feedback, and you will see that incorporated into this budget. We are much less conservative than we've been in the past. Um, we've pushed Susan outside her comfort zone for sure. We're right at the limit of my comfort zone for, we're still being conservative, but um that's, so you'll see some things in the results um that may um look like big swings. And part of the big swing is because we're being a lot less conservative. Um, we're assuming higher tax revenues, we're assuming lower expenses. We're doing a lot of those things we talked about in that work session in this budget. And I know Susan's going to address some of that as we get to it. But I just wanted to give you kind of a heads up as you're going through it. Um, and as you know, Susan does a great job um preparing these, and hopefully she's answered all your questions. But um we certainly are happy to address questions as they come up or at the end, so, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Dr. Duddy. Tonight, I'll be presenting the first draft of the fiscal year 2020 budget. We're still in the early stages of the budgeting process, and are gathering information from state, local governments, as well as the school district on a regular basis. Um, so tonight, uh I've just basically given you a little agenda that we're just going to discuss the calendar, the revenue and expenditure overview, fund balance, revenues, and expenditures. So tonight's the first budget presentation. We'll have another one again on the thirtieth, before we have the tentative approval on May fourteenth, with final approval on June the eleventh, and tentative millage rate approval on um June eleventh, and then final approval of the budget on July the sixteenth. I'm sorry, final approval of the millage rate on July sixteenth. Um, I've presented you here with the current budget. So this is the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, nineteen budget, just to show you what our budget looks like for this year, and to also just kind of reflect that we um originally planned to use eight million dollars of fund balance to balance the budget. You'll see that under the general fund balance obligated under estimated revenues. Okay. Well, all right, there we go. So as you can see from this graph, every year, we project to end the year with a fund balance lower than we actually do. So last year, we projected that we were going to end the year with a fund balance of eight point eight million dollars, and we actually ended the year with sixteen million dollars of fund balance. Um, this year, if we go as everything is planned, then we'll end the year with eight million dollars of fund balance. We hope that's not the case. Um, I'll get into that a little bit more. I've got some information to give you um as we go along. But I just kind of wanted to gi- give you a, an idea of, you know, what we project, and then how we actually end the year.
Before you move on, can you go back to that real quick?
Sure.
Part of the change in trying to be less conservative in our planning is that these bars over the long term would come closer together, right?
Right.
Good.
So in addition to the previous slide, I've included the percentage of fund balance at the end of each year since two thousand and nine. So we've been able to stay within board policy, which is the four to fifteen percent, because we've been using um fund balance to help balance the subsequent fiscal year's budget. And in some cases, we've even amended the subsequent fiscal year's budget as well. So that's why I just wanted to kind of let you guys know that. So if you look at those percentages, and you think, gosh, how are we able to stay within law as well as board policy, it's because we've been using fund balance to balance the budget every year. Okay. So I've, I've presented you here with the general fund revenues. Um, I've showed you the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget, how we actually ended fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. I've provided you with the percentage um of the actual versus budget in fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, um, the current year budget, as well as, as the assumptions that we have for next year. And we'll get into those a little bit more in depth here in just a second. Um, so basically, assuming that the millage rate um increases by one point five mils to twenty point one six, and the tax digest grows by six percent on the current levy amount of thirty-three, one forty-five, three one five. I think this is the question you asked earlier, Garrett. Um, our budgeted tax revenue increased to approximately thirty-eight million dollars. In addition, I'm anticipating alcohol tax revenue collections to be approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If you look under tuition, Fraser, Fraser Center is about five hundred thousand dollars. ECLC is about two million dollars. And um we're actually budgeted to receive two point five million dollars um in tuition. K-12 is being reduced every year um approximately eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars due to the number of seniors graduating, and because we're accepting no K, no new K-212 tuition students. Um, so we're planning on budgeting fifty-five thousand dollars next year for the returning students. We currently have seventeen students, and next year, we'll have twelve. This is based on the fiscal year twenty twenty tuition rate of four thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. Um, the current estimate for QBE is the House Bill thirty-one recommendation for fiscal year twenty twenty QBE summary provided by DOE, um which is about thirty million dollars. And this estimate is based on our current FTE of five thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine students. So this graph shows you the amount of taxes that have been levied since two thousand and eleven. As you can see, we raised the millage once in two thousand and twelve due to the opening of uh Glenwood Elementary and the Four Five Academy. For fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, we show an increase of ten point six five, six five percent of the digest, while the millage rate was actually reduced from twenty point nine mils down to twenty point five. And in fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, we showed an increase of eight point three nine percent in the digest, while we reduced the millage rate from twenty point five mils down to eighteen point six-six. Fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, and I've put an asterisk there, um was the first year where we saw the new sixty-five and older one hundred percent tax exemption. Although the gross tax digest increased by approximately eight percent, the district saw an overall um decrease in tax revenues of ninety-five thousand dollars due to the increase in tax exemptions. So that's why, if you're looking at two thousand and eighteen, you'll see that it's, it's a negative point thirty-one percent down there, even though the tax digest actually increased by eight percent, which you're not, you're not seeing there. Um, so the district has seen an increase in exemptions of one point six million dollars in two thousand and seventeen, to four point three in two thousand and eighteen, to five point two in two thousand and nineteen. And that's in millions.
Ask one question, is, for me, it would also be helpful to know the, the student, the enrollment increase. To, because if the enrollments are growing in line with the taxes, then to me, that's one thing that tracks well together. And if they're not growing in line, then it makes me want to find out why.
Sure.
Higher or lower?
Got it. Okay. So tax revenue assumptions. So assuming that the millage rate is increased by one point five mils next year from eighteen point six-six to twenty point one-six, and the tax digest grows on the current levy of thirty-three point one million dollars. You can see how much taxes will increase based on the various rates of growth that I've provided you here. As I stated earlier, at this time, I'm estimating a conservative growth. I said that before um we, we discussed the change, so. Um, a, a conservative growth um to the tax digest of six percent. This may change as I learn more from the Tax Assessor's Office. Currently, they've sent a calendar stating that the first time we will receive information for this um next fiscal year is late April, early May. I also contacted the city to make sure that I didn't miss anything, and they said that they've not received anything as well. In addition, we are working jointly with the City of Decatur on, on a study of the tax digest with Georgia State University, and hope to have some information about that from them within a few weeks.
So that study is a, a tax revenue projection study. So we're collaborating with the city on that, so that we'll both be using the same projections of tax revenue, and we're having these experts put it together, which is pretty exciting.
Can you explain the difference between the thirty-seven, nine, fifty-eight, and then two slides back, the fiscal year two thousand and twenty assumption of tax revenue of thirty?
The three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar alcohol tax.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great.
Beat me up.
Um, I was just so proud you answered those questions. Okay, tax revenues.
Susan was pretty impressed that I was able to answer your questions today. I did that without checking with her, so. She was pretty proud of me.
I was very proud.
She felt like she was a really good teacher. And she was.
So this slide shows you how much was budgeted for tax revenues, and what was actually levied and you, and received. This is, this is the same slide that I've presented you um every year. I've just been adding to it, so now I've got ten years' worth of data, or actually, it's eleven. But um anyway, so I can go in, if you want me to, I can read this and, and like make you fall asleep. Um, or if there's any sort of questions that you have about a particular year, I've got that down in here in my notes. Um, but if not, I'll move to the next slide. Basically, what we're doing here is just showing you what the budget was, what was actually levied, and then what we actually received, and what the percentage of um the budget was to what we actually. and then what we actually received and what the percentage of the budget was to what we actually were received in.
Forgive me, but is that not reversed? This is the percentage of the actual as compared to the budget. The point being that the actual keeps coming in higher than the budget, not less.
Yes.
When I look at this, I look.
Oh, right, percentage of actual to budget.
Mm-hmm.
I see what you're saying.
It's throughout the slides, I found, I just thought it was. It worried me because I think it says.
Yeah, we'll fix that.
Say that again, one more time.
The heading is, it says percentage of budget to actual, but it's.
But it should be actual to budget.
To budget. It's probably been that way for 10 years.
Seven.
Looking at Susan's face, knowing how she makes these presentations, it has probably said those exact words for quite a while.
Seven, perhaps. Okay, I can do that. Yeah, thank you. Okay, noted. One thing I do want to point out that I mentioned earlier as we were talking about revenues is just to let you guys know. So currently, we've actually received 101% of our tax revenues as of this month. So right now, we're already at 100%, which is great. Most of the time, the tax collections that we receive in for the remainder of this year kind of trickle in. They're slow after the fact. And of course, without getting into my accounting world, the billing goes out in April when we start collecting, they start collecting, but we don't recognize those revenues until next fiscal year. So I say all that to say that we've pretty much collected 100% of our taxes for this year, actually more than that. So this, I actually presented this to Cabinet and it was recommended that we keep this in just for fun. So austerity reduction, this shows you the money that we lost from the austerity reduction from the time it was implemented until this year because this is the first year that we've actually not had an austerity reduction in our QBE allotment. And over the course of, from 2003 to this fiscal year, we actually lost $18 million worth of revenue, which is a lot of money for us, a lot.
But I do think it's important to have this slide here and show it went to zero just because we do complain a lot, but there is, the state government did get rid of the austerity reduction, right? And I think there were times that we thought that would never happen. And so there was that trend, that it was going down and Governor Deal followed through and before he left, we got rid of the austerity reduction. So I do want to give credit where credit's due on that. But as much as it would be nice to have had that $18 million over those years, they did follow through and get rid of it by the time Deal left, so.
So I've also presented you with a slide that shows what was budgeted every year. And just letting you know how much that we've actually received in more money in most years from QBE than what we actually budgeted. And that has to do with the midterm adjustment that we receive every year due to our growth. And I can elaborate if anybody wants me to elaborate on any of that. So the next slide is, in most, just basically showing you what the expenditures were, what was budgeted for 2018, what the actual was. I actually wrote it correctly there, percentage of, no, I did it wrong there too, didn't I? Golly. So just letting you know that in most cases, we end up coming in better than what we anticipate as far as the expenditures are concerned. And then I've provided you with the fiscal year 2019 budget as well as the estimates for the 2020 budget.
Why is there what seems like a relatively large jump between 19 and 20 on personnel, salaries?
So.
Is that the teacher retirement jump?
No, I mean, you mean from fiscal year 2018 as far as the budget is concerned?
From 2019 to 2020, I don't, I actually don't think that's a unusually large jump.
No.
It's normal.
No.
Between new students, step increases.
18 and 19, it was bigger, actually.
Yeah, that's not an unusual jump. In fact, if anything, it may look a little bit larger because of what you're going to see in a second. The $3,000 jump on every teacher salary step turns out to be more for every single teacher than what our normal cost of living adjustment would have been. So those, that percentage is actually higher even than what it would have been.
Okay, so this just shows you the budget versus actual over the course of 2009 to 2018. Okay, so this, these are the tier one expenditure assumptions that I've gone ahead and incorporated into the fiscal year 2020 budget. Basically, what it shows you is how much money it will cost the district to implement the $3,000 adjustment to the state salary schedule. And if I remember right, the percentage increase is somewhere between four and I think the max was about 8% depending upon where they fall in the state salary schedule. I've got that more in detail, I didn't present that here, but just to kind of give you an idea. We've also budgeted for a 2% cost of living adjustment for the non-teaching positions, a step increase for all the eligible employees. TRS is increasing from 20.9% to 21.14, which is a lot, but not as much as the increase was last year. It was huge last year. And then the other benefit increases are just those increases associated with FICA. And then the increase to the new school, increase to the school budget allocations, 20.9 new positions at the schools, 5.4 custodial positions, 4.3 maintenance positions, and then some other things that we feel like are needed at the schools due to the opening of Tally Street as well as moving third grade to Fave. And then an additional technology specialist at Tally and then the benefits for the school nutrition workers at Tally, additional bus drivers, and then just startup cost of Tally Street.
And just to clarify, when we say tier one, it's like what we've done in the past, where tier one is the really essential, like these are things, either because it's our practice, like the salary increases, the cola, the steps, things like that that we've talked about before, that has to be number one on the list, or things that are just, you've got the kids coming, you've got the school opening, you've got third grade moving, you really, you have to do these things. Tier two is that next level of really critical things, but not because of all those things. And then you won't even see tier three in here because, as you'll see as we get into here, you've already run out of money by the time you get to tier two. But we will be presenting you with what those tier three requests are because we may want to have a conversation of some of those. We may decide we want to fund more than a tier two or something like that, right? So you will see those as well. You'll get those in advance of the budget work session, for instance, so that you can take a look at what those tier three requests were. So just to remind people, those tiers, that's kind of that process we started last year.
So what we've done this year that's the same as what we've always done is basically we've provided you with the fiscal year 2020 budget. We've shown you that basically we would have to use fund balance and the amount of fund balance that we'd have to use every single year and that's on the top line there, that will the last of the major revenue sources line. It would let you know how much money we'd actually have to use for fund balance every year in order to, until we actually run out. So.
Match revenues to expenses.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. But then something new, I'm not going to talk too much about this because what I want to do is show you this one. So what we've done here is we've actually provided you with a budget to show you what it would actually be like if we, and I'll talk a little bit about some of the things that I've included in years out, but what it would actually be like as far as the millage rate would be concerned if we raised the millage and/or lowered the millage in order to maintain at least a minimum of 4% fund balance at the end of each fiscal year. So if you, if you look, you'll see that tax revenues, they basically include the mil rate, the increase that we spoke about of 1.5 mils for 2020 with the opening of the Tally Street Upper Elementary School. In addition, it includes a 6% increase every year afterwards. In addition to the 6% increase, it depends upon that year. You'll see there will also be an increase to the millage rate and that's the second to the last line down at the bottom. And in some cases, it went up and then in some cases in 2024, you'll see that it actually goes down. That's in order to keep us with that minimum fund balance of 4%. The tuition revenues will remain constant, but a decrease is based on the number of students. We'll have a slight decrease based on the number of graduating students each year. State revenues will consist of an 8% increase every year plus anticipated grant revenues of 182,000. Salaries increase every year by 4.5%. The 4.5% is made up of a 2% cost of living adjustment and an average step increase of 2.5%. In addition, the district is going to add two, eight, eight and four teachers consecutively. So they'll add 12 in 2021, eight in 2022, eight in 2023 and four in 2024. And that's also included in this budget projection. The benefits are based, are increased by the 4.5% as well and include additional teachers added each year. And then all the other expenditures are increased by 0.9%, which is the average increase over the last five years excluding any unusual payments like the very last payment, which is the transfer of funds to ECLC.
So a couple of points of clarification. So the slide before this one is the traditional way we've done it where what we've done is we've said, okay, we, the traditional part of it has been, what, how much fund balance does it take in order to get the revenues to match the expenses based on the projections? And what does that do to the fund balance, right? And so that's why you see the fund balance going negative because we've just put it in the same way we've always done it. And what we're reflecting on is we, with our new, less conservative way of projecting, that's not a very responsible way to do that, right? Because now we are much less conservative. We're trying to be more accurate on the tax projections, the salaries. We're looking at the enrollment projections. We're figuring out how many new teachers would we need based on enrollment projections and only add in that number of teachers, things like that. So there's less wiggle room than there has been in the past, right? Where in the past, you might be a little less worried if fund balance starts to look a little wonky, but here, I'm more worried because we have been less conservative, right? There's less wiggle room in the projections. So that's why we did the second version, just to show, let's assume we are gonna meet the board policy, which says you have to maintain at least 4%. Make that the constant. And then set the millage rate based off of that. And so what you see is the millage rate does bump up and then interestingly, it comes back down as that population of students levels out. So you may recall from our projections, we do see that plateau in our projections, okay? The other thing I would clarify is, you know, we were speaking earlier of the partnership with the city on the Georgia State study for tax revenue. What we've done right now is we've projected out that 6% increase based on what you saw on one of those earlier slides and you can see, like the average has been 6% roughly recently. As that study gets completed, we will update these numbers based off the study. So they may come to us and give us a totally different projection. We'll have to adapt to whatever that projection is. And they'll be looking at things like all these commercial developments that are going in and stuff like that. Whereas we are looking at the historical trends and seeing that, for instance, absent the senior exemption, it's about 6% is roughly where it has been recently. And so that's why that projection is there. So that's why you're seeing the two versions of it this time because along with being less conservative, we also have to be a little more careful in how we're doing our projections. So just to explain kind of why you're seeing those two versions.
So the increase in tax and revenues is just 6%, you know, that's what you just described. But the increase in expenses is actually based on our actual projected headcount.
Correct, yeah. So the increase in the salaries and benefits side of thing is based on how many new students we're getting. We then have a formula to calculate how many teachers that will approximately be and that's what's reflected in the salaries and benefits piece along with assuming a 4.5% increase, 2% as a cola and 2.5% as a step. Okay, so we're projecting adding staff and continuing to increase salaries. And when you increase salaries, you increase benefits, you increase retirement. And then, so all of those lines increase together. And then all those other expense categories, we've looked at and it's been very consistent year to year, increasing at about 0.9%. And so that's why we project those, all those other expense categories at a 0.9% increase.
It's kind of scary that the certain part of this is the expenditure projection and the uncertain part is the revenue.
One thing also to point out is you'll see, if you look at draft one and then the 2021, you'll see that in those two years, we're projecting to actually use some of the fund balance at that point, 4.5 million dollars for next year as well as 145. Then if you come to 2022, you'll see that there's an increase to fund balance the remaining three years. I just wanted to point that out.
And just to clarify too, we are not saying this is how it would have to be done, right? We're using all the fund balance needed in the draft for 2020. That isn't the only way to do it, right? We could take that fund balance and spread it out and do a mil rate that's more level, right? That doesn't adjust every single year. We could calculate a mil rate that would be level across the years and that fund balance would be spread out over the years also. Does that make sense? You wouldn't have to use it all upfront.
What is the value of one mil today?
It is, it's 1, 1,007,7,7, I think.
That one, I don't remember.
But as of right now, that doesn't include like any sort of the increase.
1.8 million.
Yeah, essentially. Good job.
That's what I have, 1.89.
1.89, is that what you calculated?
Okay.
Okay.
So here are the tier two additional district-wide requests. And I'll give you guys a second. I don't want, I don't want to feel like I'm reading too.
You don't need to read them all.
Yeah.
So these are things that we think are pretty essential. A lot of these are things that have either been put off, like, or have been absorbed in the past and we've just had to find money for them, but we really should have them be part of the budget, right? So like the facility rental thing, for instance, a lot of times those things have come up in the past and we just had to find the money somewhere and take it from some other line to pay it. Whereas now, we're trying to identify all of those, so they're budgeted for upfront. Some things we know just they're coming, right? Like so the fingerprinting and the software we use to do the background checks, we know that there's an increase coming and so we put it here. We're going to have to pay it or get rid of that system, right? And so that's what you'll see here. And there are a couple of things, like for instance, band instruments at DHS, we've just recognized like there is not a sufficient budget for replacing the bad instruments and there never has been and there's been a lot of burden put on the boosters. And so that's an example of one where we've put a budget in there. So even though a lot of these are fairly small dollar amounts, we've put them here just because we're trying to really capture all those expenses and not have these surprises as the year goes on. The other thing I'd point out is there's, the largest line here by far is curriculum adoption and instructional materials. It's many, as our teachers know for sure, and many of you may know, we do not invest a whole lot in curriculum. We put a lot of burden on our teachers to find resources and develop their own resources. And what's happened as a result is we have had, like if you go to a math classroom at five different elementary schools, it will look very different, what they're doing because they have individually come up, even two teachers across the hall from each other may be using different resources if they haven't collaborated together. So as part of that whole program evaluation process we talked about in the past, you may recall us saying, part of that cycle is the curriculum adoption. And so what you're seeing here is that reflected of we need to invest in curriculum, we need to invest in professional learning related to some of our decisions, we've done, things like that. So curriculum is extremely expensive. The 520,000, 27,000 is not at all unreasonable for what we would expect to spend every year at a minimum to actually refresh our curriculum on a five, six, seven-year cycle. So that's what you're seeing there. That's why that big one is there. And then you see things like the PL. We've got a lot of professional learning that we need to be doing for the PBIS, for the distorted practices, beyond diversity. And some of those trainings in the past came up and we just decided, hey, we really need to do this. Let's find the money to do it. Now we've tried to project forward, what are we actually planning to do? And we need to put that in the budget and not leave it as something we try to find later. So that's what you see in the tier two requests.
So if we don't fund professional learning, that means that, I mean, what happens?
It means we don't do those things.
Those things don't happen.
Correct. Yep.
It just occurred to me, we added with snow days, I'm thinking about how you fit all this stuff in, you know, and the idea that we have an extra two million dollars, you know, um, we don't. But we added three days to the schedule as a buffer against snow days. Is there some way to flex that, to make that professional learning? That maybe it could be that, um, if you have the snowpocalypse, that it's professional learning that would suffer in those rare events rather than the, I mean, is there a way to, to make it work like that so that we could?
That would backtrack a little bit on the promise that on the average, we wouldn't use them because we're going to use them.
Correct, and that, and that's the challenge is that's what happened in the past, is it was always professional learning that would suffer. Um, the, the one thing you could do, because as we saw, I don't know about you, but I lost, lost power this weekend, right? Um, and, um, those things happen here, it doesn't matter what time of year, right? And it's quite possible, and I've been sharing with teachers, like, it is quite possible we could have a day off school the last week of school. Because I've just found you can't trust the infrastructure here, right? You never know when that's gonna happen and you're not gonna be able to have school. So it, to your point, when you build an extra days and it turns out you might not need them at the end, the, the really only way to be sure you're not gonna need it is just change that last day of kids, right? Like on the Thursday, when we're supposed to end Friday, on Thursday say, hey, kids, guess what? Today's your last day, surprise, right? You know, um, that would be one way to find that extra day, which you couldn't ever plan. Um, a lot of it is, there are things we could build in, some of those as professional learning days. My worry is it goes back to that system of you end up using them, right? You end up losing that and you've invested a lot of money in getting people here to do training. You've done a lot of prep and then you're not able to do it and you can't then implement whatever that PL is. So that's the challenge with that.
And maybe this, this may go till our conversation at the work session, but on the tier two, I mean, is there any professional learning in here for dyslexia?
There is not, but what we, what's not reflected here is what we added in last year's budget, which is the literacy specialist. So we'll have the in-house expert, um, who will be our person who can do the reading instruction. Um, and we're in the, in the process of filling that right now. So, um, that's one piece that, um, you wouldn't see in here as its own separate PL.
So after, um, what I've done here is basically just included, so this is the what would happen if we included tier one and tier two requests. Um, and, and this is how we've, we've kind of always done things, leaving it with a millage of twenty point one-six throughout. Um, and basically, you know, you, using, um, fund balance that, and then at the end of the day, we don't have any fund balance to make sure that the, the, um, budget's balanced. And then here you'll see that we did the same thing that we did before. And pretty much it's, it's the same, um, other than the additional, um, one million dollars has been added to it. Um, but basically you'll see that, you know, we've gone in and looked at the millage rates and said, okay, so instead of the twenty point one-six, we'd need twenty point six-two next year, um, in order to maintain four percent fund balance at the end of the year. And you can kind of see that it fluctuates and it ends up going up and then coming back down to twenty point eight there at the end. That's just maintain, keeping it at the four percent. Um, now, of course, um, you know, just me thinking, if you like, if you went up and you kept it up, then of course your fund balances would increase every single year, but we tried to maintain it the four.
Question, and you may have already stated this, but I'm scribbling notes and trying to listen at the same time. Um, the enrollments growth, um, did you say it goes up six percent per year?
No, it, I, I don't know the exact number, but the, the salaries and benefits piece, we have adjusted based on what our actual enrollment growth projections are. So we've accommodated for twelve teachers and then the next year eight, the next year eight, the next year four, um, to accommodate that plateau. The six percent was the tax revenue growth, um, that we're projecting based on looking at previous tax revenues and not looking at what the impact of the senior exemption, because that's an anomaly, right? And because what we're really interested in is, is the growth of the tax base. And we've seen in recent years an average of about six percent.
Could we, I mean, it, it helps me to understand those costs to have the, the enrollment number in there. And perhaps expenditures per enrollment as well. I always end up doing the math to figure it out and I don't, never know if I'm getting it quite right, but I.
So you just, you want us to add like another line at the bottom that would just say, like, for, for any of them?
Enrollment projections.
Enrollment that was that year or the enrollment that will be.
Sure.
Um, and I, you know, one of the things I did is, is I was estimating the sixty-five hundred, because I think we used that in something we wrote recently, but we're not at sixty-five hundred yet. And it may be some time. So I, I guess, sorry for interrupting. My concerns are, is that in the past, we were in a decline and we made projections that the decline would continue going forever. And based on those positions, we did what was physically responsible, but we also put ourselves into a bind on facilities, uh, which we've done very, managed well. I know that we're projecting that our enrollment is tapering off and that with your twelve, eight, eight, four shows that, it's in there.
Our, our enrollment growth is tapering off.
And growth is tapering off, yes. Um, so it would help me to see that. The other thing is, if I look at your, those ten years of data, um, and this is not scientific, but on average, we come in two and a half percent higher and our expenditures on average come in four percent lower. And if I apply that to the, the draft one with the tier one, um, that difference between two and a half percent more revenue and four percent less expenditures, about four or five million dollars.
So I'm glad you brought that up because that is exactly part of why you don't see tier three expenses here is because we need to know the board's comfort level with taking that into account, okay? So we have been more conservative or less conservative on the tax revenue. Um, we have not taken the expenses. The expenses we have projected at the point nine or point nine-one, something like that, whatever that average was, right? Um, and we have not taken into account that we tend to budget for more expenses than we actually spend to the tune of about ninety-five percent, right? Um, and we have not actually taken into account that the taxes we budget for typically, um, we get collections that are about a hundred and three percent, let's say. Um, because that makes us pretty nervous when we get to that point of putting those numbers in there. Because we feel like we've already, um, tried to be less conservative on some of the other ways of doing the projections. Um, and, um, maybe once we get to the point of having the official tax study and we have Georgia State saying, here's all this scientific data about why your tax revenues will be what they are, um, that may increase our comfort level a little bit of saying, yeah, so now let's take that into account. Um, but that does make us nervous to say that we're gonna project, we're gonna project closer and we're going to assume that those patterns continue. Um, but it's certainly something we can do. If the board is comfort with that, comfortable with that, that's what's most important. And if that's the way you want to go, we certainly can at least put together projections that use that, if you want to see that.
I understand, because if you, if you mess up in one direction, you have more money.
Correct.
If you mess up the other direction, your fund balance, very scary, your fund balance represents about two months.
Yes. If you mess up in one direction, you have a graph where you've got bars that are high and bars that are low. If you mess up in the other, other direction, you're riffing employees.
Right.
And so that's what makes us nervous.
Uh, on the other hand, that also represents about two and a half mils.
Correct.
And so, you know, I, I want to have that conversation because I'm uncomfortable raising the millage rate higher than we would need to because we've got a potential five million dollars that may or may not show up. Um, I don't know how we, you know, divide the baby King Solomon and all that. But, um, I, I guess I, I don't see it as realistic and I, I know that you're not actually projecting. I do like, I should have started with this, I like that you're targeting the four percent because that combined with that revenue comes in higher and expenditures come in lower, keeps us within that four to fifteen percent. I really should have started with that.
Sure.
I assume the good stuff and I don't always acknowledge it, so I really, I do like that.
Let me, let me ask you a couple of questions. One, I assume that, like, let's look at that final slide that she's got up there right now. And so on this slide, we are maintaining that, that constant four percent unspent balance, okay? Um, but we used all the general fund balance right in the very first year and set the mill rate accordingly. And then had no general fund balance for the most part for the future years. And that, so you see a little bumping around of the mill rate. Would you like to, if, just for this scenario, I want to talk about your other one in a second, but just for this scenario, would you like to see a version that maintains more of a constant mill rate? And, and spreads out the, um, fund balance over time so that the mill rate, so that if we do get to the point of saying we need to increase the mill rate, we only do it that year, right? We do it once and then it maintains steady over time with, by spreading out that fun, fun balance. Does that make sense?
Where I was gonna go was that I would like to see something that isn't changing every year.
Yes. Does that sound good? I mean, we can do a version of that.
Yeah.
So then my other question is, do you want to see a version that gets to Garrett's point, which is, okay, so we have projected these expenditures, we've looked at how it's looked over the years, but you can look at the other slide that says, we're probably only gonna spend ninety-five percent of that. Do you want to see a version that takes that into account? Do you want to see in that version that we typically get a hundred and three percent of what we've budgeted for tax revenue? And we could incorporate that into the projections to exactly your point, right? Of, um, not leaving money on the table because we're being conservative with our planning. We could certainly put together a version that does that if you'd like to see it.
I'm most nervous about anticipating that the tax revenue growth.
Me too, because I feel just, I mean, we've seen, we saw a great recession and we saw a great recovery, but it's uncertain how, how long that's going to continue as aggressively. I also was thinking, uh, that it will be very helpful to see the projections come from the county. And I feel like I would need that in order to really consider the tier three requests within context.
And you're talking about the, um, the numbers we get from the county of what they're projecting?
Right, because they have a, a better projection for year one and probably less accurate as they go out. But even so, their projections are based on real numbers, whereas ours are an assumption.
Do we remember the timeline for this work with the city? Like what, because didn't we say to Georgia State, we'd really like to have these numbers by?
Yeah, and I want to say that it was sometime around now, but I think the thing was, we didn't get the information that we needed for signature from them as timely as we had anticipated. So I think it's probably gonna be more like, maybe instead of like the beginning of April, more like the end of April.
So one thing we could do is, um, and, and I think we're on the same page. We'd much rather use whatever the experts are projecting for tax revenues. Um, and expenses clearly are something we have more control over than tax revenue, right? Just in terms of what actually is gonna happen in the future. Um, so one thing we could do is do a version of this that spreads out the fund balance so that the mill rate is more steady and takes into account, be a little less conservative even on the expense side because maybe rather than the point nine percent, the point nine percent raise each time, maybe we do a half percent raise or something like that. Or maybe we do no raise at all, uh, knowing that traditionally we have not spent five percent of the funds. And, and leave the tax, how they are until we get the official numbers from the experts and do another version that has the, the expenses a little bit more conservative. That's certainly an option, we could do that.
I don't want to, I don't want to go less conservative on everything across the board. I, I feel like, at least for me, let's just do some baby steps and, and being less conservative on our, um, on the revenues. That's good enough for me.
Yeah.
I would like to, with the fund balance stuff, take baby steps on, on the millage rate. And I'm willing to risk eating a bit of the fund balance for one year and then having to make it up as we, we watch and go. I worry that we're gonna overshoot the mark. Um, and, you know, uh, without any disrespect, when government institutions have funds, there are lots of things to spend them on.
Yes.
Um, so it will get spent.
Yep.
I don't think we've ever issued a refund.
Yep.
Um, one thing I, I failed to mention, which also I should have mentioned at the beginning, is that when you open a new facility, uh, like Tally Street, there are a lot of fixed costs. There's a principal, there's the front desk manager, there's the nurse.
The nurse, the custodians.
Energy.
When I started on the board, that equaled a half a mil. I don't know what that equals now. Um, but we typically, when schools opened, we had to consider raising the millage rate.
So that's why you see the one and a half mil rate. The, the one and a half mil increase is our, our saying, we're opening a brand new school and we need a way to fund it. That's what the one and a half mil piece is.
I had always been told or heard that it was a one percent, we figured one, one, one mil, one mil to open a school.
I think traditionally, but that's like if you're opening.
This is a bigger school.
It's a big school. It's a big school, you got a lot more expenses, exactly.
And I will say, we did not raise the millage rate when we opened it, which is.
That's right.
No, we're proud of that.
Right.
The, the, the one question I have, and I've asked this six, six times, probably every single time, at least once a year when you present the budget. But I'm gonna ask it one more time, which is that we always assume that a step, which means that we pay according to the existing schedule, results in a two and a half percent increase in the budget overall.
Yes.
Which appears to, to say that if I made a matrix and I have all my employees and I have all their salary steps, that from, and then I, I average it out.
I actually did it, just so you know, I actually did it. I made a spreadsheet that increased every single person on their step and it averaged to two and a half percent.
Okay, but ultimately, at least in a big enough system, you ought to reach an equilibrium where, you know, people age out, new people come in. And it shouldn't be that everybody ages up and you never have younger people. I mean, do we retire people in your model?
Um, yes.
Do they reach a cap step?
But part of the problem is those people might have already maxed out.
Mm-hmm.
So they don't have a step to go to, they're only getting the COLA, the cost of living. Right, there's only so many steps.
But then granting, granting the step.
You're not getting that.
I understand, so that's an, that's, that's an, an argument to give more money or something. But in terms of how the growth works, the granting the step, it.
Shouldn't the proportion of people at the different steps be fairly constant?
If we did like a lot of school districts and we replaced outgoing people with brand new people straight out of college, I would agree with you. That's not typically what we do. We typically hire the experienced teachers who have a master's degree, who have taught for ten years.
So over time, our entire staff is gonna be the most senior level. Because we're, we're growing, we're, we're aging, 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 aging. I mean, at some point it's gonna stop, right?
When I did my analysis, I took into account the fact that some people are gonna leave, right? And that when they leave, you're replacing them with other people. But the people we're replacing them with are also pretty expensive people. And so that's where the two and a half percent came from. It took that into account.
I appreciate you're doing the spreadsheet that gets to the level of detail that if it were to change, it would show up.
Correct.
As opposed to if the assumption no longer proves true.
Correct.
And we continue to assume it.
The two and a half percent is pretty accurate.
One thing, the inflation rate is one point nine percent.
Well, healthcare benefits and retirement, yeah.
Yeah.
But you always ask that question, so I was prepared for the answer.
I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask, what was the cost of within adjustment, one point nine percent?
Nice.
Thank you.
All right.
We got me.
What further discussion?
So this helps, I, I think I have what we need to know to prepare for the budget work session.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Susan, great work.
All right. We have one more item.
I think we tabled that.
We just have a couple. Yeah, so Property Tax Study Committee, just an update, we do have the agreement in place. Um, and it, we are collecting data. They've sent us a list of data that they want. Um, and Susan's working on some, Heidi's working on some, they're working with the city on some. Um, and so that's moving forward, um, with the, the contract with, um, Georgia State. I think it's actually the same group, um, who is doing the other study for the city. Um, and so they did check with us to make sure we're okay with that, that they would work with the city for that and with us for this, and we said it was, so. That's it, that's the update on that, unless you guys have something more.
I think the board work plan can probably be deferred to the strategic priorities discussion, unless someone has something in particular.
Um, the future dates, I do have a couple of future dates to talk about. Um, and I think I actually, um, have an idea that we can consider. Because one, we have received a student discipline appeal and we need to heal, hear that appeal by April twenty-sixth. I'm wondering if we want to tack that on with the work session and just do that appeal on the twenty-second, um, and, and do that together. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the, we've talked about potentially moving our exec session in the future um, to maybe like six o'clock and start the meeting at seven, or move it to five-thirty and start this meeting at six-thirty. Um, just want to put that out there, if that's something, we're happy to update the agenda if you guys are on board with that. Just wanna put that out there, if that's something, we're happy to update the agenda if you guys are on board with that. And then if we ever had to, we could reconzean, convene exec session at the end of the meeting. Um, and then just the reminder, we already talked about it, April thirtieth work session is about budget. So that's all I had for future date stuff.
Graduation?
Yes, it should be on your calendar, it's May thirty-first, is that the number?
It might be too late.
Yes, May thirty-first.
In Philadelphia. Last year after the graduation, we had suggested, um, is that the senior class or the high school, I guess Alethea's not here, but might wanna rethink the graduation ceremony. And there might not be.
I'll have to check, we shared the feedback from last year, um, about that, and I have not checked with them to see. So May, you know, I can touch base and see if they've made any changes.
The idea being that there might be something a little bit more meaningful, so they could shake hands with teachers instead of necessarily us, or high-five teachers or whatever.
Yep. We shared that with them last year, I'm not sure if they've changed anything or not, but.
Except for them, but as long as they're doing what they wanna do.
Yep, we'll check.
All right, we have a need for an executive session to discuss legal and personnel issues.
Are we having any sort of retreat this spring or summer?
Yes, let me look back at my notes, I think we did talk about that.
Do we have a date?
Let me, let me check, let me check. We, I know we talked about it, I just can't remember if we actually got it put on the calendar.
I don't have a date.
You don't have a date on the calendar?
That I know of, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something, cause I do remember we talked about it.
I do remember that.
Because don't we need to get some more training in?
Yeah, we were gonna do training credit, make sure we got training credits.
And that's by the end of June?
Yep.
Okay.
I will find my notes on that.
Yeah, cause that calendar gets kinda tight between now and then.
One.
I wanna do that video again. Not doing that again.
I thought we'd all just get together and do online courses together.
One thing that we had, one thing that we had discussed, which was Garrett's, uh, we've talked about this, competency-based education that we all get kind of excited about, which really goes a lot of what we discussed earlier, uh, in this meeting. And the potential that, um, to attend, um, in October, there's a seminar. And I'm mentioning it because if we were to do that, w- we, we can only do so many of these retreats in, in together time. And so we might choose not to do a spring retreat. And if, if we're gonna do, if we wanna do this thing in, in Colorado.
That's fine, as long as we get our education credits.
I don't know if that's impossible.
I, I'll double check. I'll double check. The, um, so the reason you have this packet here about Westminster is cause I had heard about the, the conversation about it and the registration is open right now. And I, just in my experience, it's always better to get registered early if you know you're gonna go. So if that is something you are interested in doing, um, I, I wouldn't mind bringing along some staff as well, to, to be able to see this in action. I watched the videos and stuff that they have there and I'm very intrigued by it. So the reason you have this packet is because it does ask some questions about like, what's your experience with competency-based education? What are you most interested in learning about, things like that? So if we did decide that we wanna go ahead and register, um, we can take care of that, but I'll just need to know some answers to, you don't have to fill out the whole thing, we know a lot about you, but there's some things we don't know. So I don't know if that's something we know we wanna do, or if we just wanna wait and talk about, but, um, if you do decide to move forward with it, I, I also.
I think we should, we can, I suggest we discuss it more at, at the work session.
Okay.
As a strategic priority, cause it's.
I think it's a good idea, and I just wanna say it's, it's valuable if we can, as much as possible, go together.
Yeah, I agree.
Because then, I mean, otherwise, part of us are left out of a bigger conversation and don't have the frame of reference. So I, I think that kind of also impacts maybe our decision whether we go or not, if we have a critical mass of people willing and interested to go.
So, uh, Maggie and I will make sure to bring that up when we have the strategic priorities discussion at the work session and we can kinda decide then if it fits and then we can get the registration in.
And if we have to pay for somebody from GSBA to go with us so we can get credit, it'd probably be worth it.
Yeah, yeah, it probably would be. Cool.
Well, or maybe they would be interested to go, ju- just to go.
Well, it would be interesting if we could take that, if we were to do that, if we could take that time and do a few other things that we have to actually, some board business separately. So that we.
Since we're all together.
We're all together. Do we have a mo- uh, a motion to?
Can we do a five-minute recess before that?
Okay.
Second?
Granted. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.